Quorum being present, I'll call to 2019 Annual Town Meeting to order. Please be seated. Gentlemen in front. Years ago, I introduced a voluntary pledge of allegiance. This falls squarely within the moderator's right to regulate the proceedings. The moderator's discretion, but ingrained now is part of our tradition. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And join us if you wish, Mr. Liam Galpin, Troop 210 Southampton.
Cover guard, attention. Cover guard, advance. For those of you not in your uniform, please place your hand over your heart. Cover guard, halt. Cover guard, cross the colors. Everyone, please recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Cover guard, please post the flag of the United States of America. Cover guard, attention. Cover guard, dismissed. Everyone, please be seated.
Thank you, Liam Galpin and Troop 210 Boy Scouts of Southampton. Good evening, fellow citizens and voters of Southampton. And I'm going to take off my jacket now. Thank you. Welcome to our annual town meeting 2019. Yes, we will turn the fans off eventually to be heard for some of the more sensitive articles, but we'll leave them on right now for circulation. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. Thank you for your continued support. It's an honor to serve you and be your elected town moderator. Your positive feedback encourages me and is most valued by me. Your negative feedback alerts me to the fact I'm doing my job. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you by being Southampton Cemetery Commissioner, Cemetery Superintendent of our three cemeteries, Southampton Historical Society Board Member, East Hampton Media Board Director. I am on the Celebrate Southampton Committee for the Townwide Festivities for Saturday, September 14th. There is no compensation for any of these privileges. Without objection, Ms. Lucy Dalton, our town clerk, will be elected to be town clerk for a nice town meeting. Congratulations. Hearing no objections, it's unanimous. Will you please rise to be sworn in? Without objection, Carl Keener will be permitted, and I publicly thank Carl Keener for his fourth successive year as our deputy moderator. Without objection, Carl Keener will be permitted to continue as deputy moderator for one more year. Congratulations, it's unanimous. While our town clerk, Lucy Dalton, administrate the oath of office, please. Thank you, it's official. Our town meeting is a business meeting of Southampton or legislator branch session called pursuant to a posted warrant, the official record of what will be discussed and the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may actually take action. Reading of the warrant. Warrant for the Annual Town Meeting, May 7, 2019, Hampshire, to either of the constables and the town of Southampton, it said county. Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the precincts of the town of Southampton, County of Hampshire, qualified to vote in election and town affairs, to meet in the cafeteria, gymnasium, William E. Norris School, 34 Palmeri Meadow Road, Southampton, Mass., on Tuesday, May 7, 2019, 7:00 PM. Then are there to act on the following articles, signed and tested to Constable Southampton. May we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton's culture for those who have moved on ahead since we've last met? Thank you. Tonight, our annual town meeting is being recorded as well as sent out live on public cable access, Channel 191. Thank you, Ryan Arnold and East Hampton Media and Tim Riley, thank you. The warrant. Articles enter a -- and I've shortened this by two pages, thanks to friendly counsel. Why not? Articles enter a warrant that is posted in at least five locations and warns the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning. The executive branch of our town government, select board, finance committee, treasury, collector, accountant, clerk, administrator, have worked hard to create and weigh in on the articles for tonight's town meeting warrant. Their job is done. Although these members sit up front, by our tradition, they individually do not have more of a vote or say tonight than any of you in our annual town meeting. The moderator's rules, not town council's, legal opinion apply while a town meeting is in progress. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras, a privilege, not a right, if and only if they agree to remain in the back of the town meeting room on the far side of the floor line or outside the building, not in aisles or hallways. A quorum, the essence, the necessary ingredients of our town meeting only requires presence of our town clerk, town moderator, a properly executed warrant with return of service, and in Southampton, a quorum of 50 people in accordance with our town bylaw. The duties of a moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner. Fully and partially, consistently, regardless of who you are, not assure any particular outcome. I ensure those who wish to address this town meeting have opportunity and ensure the integrity of our town meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides' need will be heard on each article. Moderator's authority is over process, not outcome. I leave the outcome to you, fully informed Southampton voters. Procedures accomplish things instead of manipulating town meeting proceedings. I hope every dedicated voter, even if it's not your birthday today or tomorrow, as I serve the town, so if your inexperience here holds you back, allow me to walk you through the process tonight. Anyone may challenge my process with a point of order yelled from your seat. I will invite you to the mic, where you then describe what pending action is frivolous, irrelevant, illegal, or contrary to proper procedure. Any attempt to misuse it as a device to usurp the floor will be dealt with firmly. The duties of voters. Your responsibility is to be the legislator branch of our town government for tonight's articles. We do this twice a year, maybe three times a year. You have the power to make laws by laws, the power of the purse, and to exercise your freedom of speech. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. Ground rules, courtesy, these guidelines, important to set them early, then stick with them. Town meeting is a legislature subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules. One of my duties as your moderator, why? Simple efficiency is important, so the business of the meeting can be accomplished more accurately with fewer errors and less waste of time, and try to get us all home in one evening, not two or three. More importantly, although we don't rush, but more importantly, to protection of the rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional or otherwise. Our town meetings are conducted in accordance with general laws, our bylaws, traditional customs and practices we have followed for many years with a guidance by the principles and rules of conduct in town meeting time, a handbook of parliamentary law. Organic process as our customs, traditions, and practices evolve. Tonight, we proceed with what we have since 1773, when town meeting named our then-village Southampton. Town meeting works if you want it to work, not for you alone, but for the whole community. Once the motion is read, and I have asked to receive the second, then I invite a pro and then a con statement. Our pre-appointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts. When they do not agree, the count resumes for a complete and accurate count to be announced out loud so all can hear. They count from front to back. The rights to speak. These rules of the quorum are unique to town meeting and not Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order for entities that have a lot of money, clubs, societies, and the like. Town meeting has limited budget, meets once, twice a year, and it dissolves. Robert's Rules of Orders meeting adjourned. So imagine a town meeting adjourned, and then tomorrow somebody decided, let's meet again and let's redo one of those articles. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under a warrant article and within the scope of each article before us. Merits or lack thereof for the motion. I always allowed you to speak your minds, speak your heart and mind, not read what others have written. This ties the moderator's hands to maintain an open balance. Town meeting, that is fair to all, and interferes with the moderator and the direction of the town meeting duties. It's when after a comment is ruled out of order or scope, the speaker continues to debate the moderator, that's when the speaker is directed to sit down. I don't use a gavel, which certainly may drive the point more dramatically. I do not want drama. I will not allow a voter to take a town meeting hostage. Speaking at the mic, ready to contribute something new, not repeat what something someone just said, please approach the mic up front, stand in line to be recognized and turned by the moderator. First come, first heard. I recognize speakers only, standing at the mic unless it's a point of order. Address the moderator, state your name and address. Please direct your opinions, questions, answers, and address all remarks to me, your town moderator. Do not speak directly to any member of the audience, to other voters. This is designed to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. No salesmanship, no theatrics, no body language, only content, please. Thank you. Town meeting conduct is the moderator's responsibility as authorized in our general laws, Chapter 37, Subchapter 15 and 17. You are allowed to speak up to five minutes at a time, provided you stick to the subject of the motion at hand and address me and not the town meeting audience. And no more than two times on any article, except to correct an error or answer a question. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before your request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks concise to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal. No repetition, no repetition. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, not encouraging this, and will not discourage us either. Enter table or kill any motion, that is legislate, all in a civilized way. No comments of a personal nature, no naming of names are to be made by you. There is never any occasion for you to address another in the second person. It will not be permitted. Cross-examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning, so let this be our first warning. To be successful, presenters must understand and clearly communicate the details, reasons, and implications of their proposal. Anyone unsatisfied, any voter unsatisfied with a lack of information for an article may make a motion to adjourn this town meeting to a time certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary information. Answers to your questions, those seated up front may remain seated and use their tables' microphone to answer your questions. Any reasons to move the order of the articles? Outside speakers, as our custom, we've had somebody new to address you. I will read the names. Ms. Martha Leamy, Principal Assessor, Holyoke. Mr. Greg Lewis, Greenfield, Commissioner, Pioneer Valley, Mosquito Control District, as of April 4, consists of Agawam, Burnetton, Deerfield, East Long Meadow, Hadley, Northampton, West Springfield, and Palmer. Without objection, these non-voters with an interest or expertise will be permitted to speak in this and future town meetings. Someone did approach me weeks and weeks ago, and I'm not sure where my notes are, to have someone speak, and if I've left someone's name out, now's a good time to raise your hand and let me know. Seeing none, will proceed. Hearing no objections, will proceed. Thank you. I'm almost done. Simply because someone states something, it does not make it true. A majority leaning towards approving or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously, vote exactly as you think right. Thank you all for your patience and respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. Mayor, a motion for Article 1, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to hear presentations of the Richard C. Allen Educational Award sponsored by the Highway Department and Transfer Station.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Who would like to speak on this?
I will, Robert.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, it's my pleasure to announce this year's recipients of the Richard C. Allen Scholarship Award. Mr. Allen serves Southampton for over 20 years on numerous boards and committees. Prior to his time in town, Mr. Allen served for 18 years as selectman in Brimfield, Mass. In addition, Mr. Allen was employed as a police chief, fire chief, amounting to over 38 years of public service. Mr. Allen's service to his community sets an example for others to emulate. It is in his honor that this award is named. This award is made possible through donations of nickel-returnable cans and bottles from the public and through the efforts of the Southampton Highway Department and Transfer Station. This year, we have three recipients. If you could hold your applause until they get up here. Olivia Aldrich, Sophie Aldrich, and Rebecca Walunas. While I have the microphone, I'd like to acknowledge all of the volunteers who serve on the various boards, commissions, and committees, and other volunteers who help to keep this town running. Thank you.
Thank you. I hear a motion for Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to hear presentations of state certificates.
Time out. There are no presentations, so the agreement was a motion to take no action.
Okay, I make a motion to take no action on Article 2.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, there are no certificates to hand out. All those in favor of taking no action, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Unanimous, take no action on Article 2. Mayor, a motion for Article 3, please.
Heather Pellegrini, 76 Crooked Ledge Road. I move to see if the town will accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by modifying the surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historical resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act, that the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be 1% of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing on the first available date in accordance with Mass. General Laws, and that the town hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said act. Property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low-to-moderate income senior housing in the town as defined in Section 2 of said act, and $100,000, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, or take any other action relative thereto.
Who would like to address this?
Can I make comments?
You can, yeah. You're the first.
I support this article to reduce our CPC surcharge from 1% to 3%.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
From 3% to...
Point of order. My bad. All in... Motion made or seconded? Motion made and seconded, would you please continue? Sorry? Me or her? You can't... Okay, good. That's actually a point of order? Congratulations. We had to turn it off at some time. Please start where you...
Heather Pellegrini, I support the article to reduce our CPC surcharge from 3% to 1%. When the town first adopted this surcharge, the state matched dollar for dollar. The proposed match for next year is only 11%. This article keeps us contributing, but also gives people a small tax break and gives an exemption for low-income people that we didn't have, and also low and moderate seniors that are probably particularly feeling the constant pain of the tax increases. So just try to give a little bit back to the community.
The Finance Committee does not recommend passage of this article. Who would like to speak against this article?
Virginia A. Hart, 27 Fulmer Road, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Usually I'm here presenting some kind of project that will aid this town in keeping its character, its historical, its open space, things that will benefit the town. But tonight, I'm coming before you to ask you to vote no on this article. There's a lot of misinformation circulating around out there, especially in its funding and what and how it can be used for funding. Perhaps the committee has been remiss in all these years in not presenting more information to the townspeople. As many residents have moved to Southampton more recently, the state proposed this 20 years ago, and there were a lot of meetings here in town, so people knew what it was about. But we have new residents, and some of the people who were residents at that point probably didn't come to one of those meetings because they were home, hopefully, doing their homework. And now they are voting residents. Cities and towns could opt in. Some did right away, like Southampton, got in at the ground level, got the first state grant, round of grants, we received one. Other cities and towns have been coming in, so now more than half of the cities and towns are involved in community preservation. Each state, each municipality could choose whether they wanted 1% or up to 3%. However, the state would give you a matching grant. Now that's matching. Money comes from a $20 deed transfer fee. And by the way, that's going up to 30 next year, so there'll be more money there. They also, the state, when they have surplus, they put some of that money in to the Community Preservation Trust. Cities and towns stay in according to their percentage, so that a 1% town only gets the first round, the very base. This last year, that base was 17%. They then give more money to those at 2%. And finally, for those who, like Southampton, have been at 3%, they give another round. And we had well over 50%. Compare that. 17% return from the state versus over 50%. They could also create their own committee within reason, and we... The committee has to be made up of people from the... A person from the Historical Commission, the Park Commission, the Housing Authority, Historical Committee... I said that. Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board. Southampton opted to put four more people on that. They wanted a representative from Finance and a representative from Select Board, and they placed two town residents whose responsibility is to represent the townspeople. The funds can be used for open space recreation, historical preservation, that includes buildings, artifacts, documents, things like that, and housing, affordable housing. I really want to assure you, affordable housing is housing that is based around the amount, is based around the average income of the area. Affordable housing would allow our town workers, our teachers, our full-time fire and police people to live here in town. It would allow your children and your grandchildren to buy their first home here. Affordable housing would also allow your elders, when they no longer want to live in a big house and walk upstairs to the bedroom, to live on smaller homes. This is the one area we have not done well in, mainly because we have not had any good projects. The fund then will come from the surcharge, which is placed on the property tax. The first $100,000 worth of your property is exempted. Okay, let me see.
We're about five minutes. They need more time.
Okay, I need a few more.
We need a little bit more time. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? You have the time, proceed.
First of all, I want to assure you.
Thank you.
Absolutely none of our money comes from the tax money that comes to run the town for the town budget. If we were to drop that out... We could drop it. There would not be a cent gained for the operating budget. We would simply be taking away the opportunity of community preservation to look at projects, some of which should be done by the town but could be done by community preservation. We've benefited from over $1,900,000 from the state over the year. There's a large handout back there that tells you about the project. There's a large handout back there that tells you about the projects and there are... that have been accomplished, and there are handouts that tell you about these other aspects. I might want to say that we do not... The committee does not go out looking for projects. Projects come to us. There has been a criticism that the kids get too much of it. Well, that's because the SYAA, the Park Commission, even the PTO at school have chosen to turn in a project, and they were funded. But there has been projects for other people. The elevator at Town Hall, the doors that activate, the handicap bathrooms, they've all come from that. What have we got right now that's going on? Well, go down Strong Road and watch the renovations at the Labrie Field. Real bathrooms are going to be there when it's ready again. People are going to enjoy that. If you went to the summer concert last year and it was raining, you might have gotten rained on. You won't this year. Those are just a couple things. So I ask you, vote no on this and keep us in the business of taking care of this town.
Thank you. Who's the next speaker, please? No applause? React with your votes, but go ahead. Thank you.
Hi. Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. I'm against this article. We've gotten $2 million almost in state grants thanks to this project. The fact that we're at 3 percent allows us to be in three rounds of state matching. They're going to be increasing the state match from 11 percent. The more towns they get in, the less money there is, so it has been gone down since it started. But up in the back, there's four pages' worth of projects that have been funded from CPC, and it's everything from cemetery work to our historical buildings, to the playground for preschoolers at Norris School, to the library scanning documents for historical purposes. So I'm very much against this. There's no money in the operating budget to fund what's being funded from CPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall, are you next?
Yeah, I thought we were getting order here.
Oh, I thought it was... In my head, it was Randall, then you came... Sit down. Thanks. We... When we had the microphone in the aisle, everybody got in line here. You sit down.
I just want to echo... Randall Kemp, Fulmer Road. I just want to echo some of the other sentiments. I've been on the committee since 2008. I've seen a lot of great projects funded with money leverage from the state that would have never got funded through the general fund, so I urge you to vote against.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Gary Swanson, East Street. First of all, I want to compliment the committee and particularly Virginia for all of these various projects. There have been many, many useful projects that have been undertaken with this fund. I voted for it when it initially went in years ago. I've had no problem paying my assessment through the years, but I want to make one thing very clear at this point. In fact, I think Virginia mentioned, we even... My building committee for the Town Hall, we used a portion of the... You know, a portion of the money that went into that project was also, you know, from this fund. The problem that I'm having now, and that I am in favor... I am in favor of the passage of the reduction from the 3 percent to the 1 percent now, is back when this started, we got matching money, dollar-per-dollar from the state. That doesn't happen anymore. We get some money from the state, but it's nowhere near 100 percent matching money. The other thing is that we keep buying up property in the town. We have a lot of public property at this point. What we're doing... I did about a three-year stint with the Board of Assessors here in town. What we're doing is we're losing... We're losing taxable property by continuing to purchase these various parcels. And I guess basically what the point that I want to get across is not only are we getting less state money as a result of this tax surcharge that funds this program, but we're also... We're also reaching what I consider to be a point of diminishing returns in the value of this program. I have no problem... I have no problem in maintaining the program. All that I'm suggesting at this point is that we go along, we vote this in, and we go along with a reduction. I checked my taxes. I should say our taxes with my wife. We put in about $220-some-odd dollars a year into this program, and frankly, I don't feel like I'm getting my money's worth anymore. I did in the past, but I don't now. And frankly, another $170 per year in my pocket is better off than in a program that's reached a point of diminishing returns. I recommend we vote for this article.
Thank you. Who's next?
Dan Pellegrini, Seventy-six Crooked Ledge Road. I am with Gary. I vote that we move on this article, and the reason being is there is no plan. It just seems like shiny objects when it comes to our money, whatever seems to be the soup of the day we spend it on. And to give you an example, we talk about open space. We talk about preserving that, and we also talk about low-income housing. Well, you can't buy up all the property to the person's point before me and expect that property values are not going to go up. So every time we buy open space and take away a subdivision, it just increases the cost of other properties in town, which is just getting affordable housing farther away. Second to that, you're now lowering your tax basis, as Gary indicated. So overall, I am with Gary. I've seen some projects out there that I scratch my head, such as a $50,000 roof on the Zipta Barn. I mean, we're looking at funding our schools properly or not funding our schools properly. I'd rather vote an override for what we save on each of our tax rolls and put it towards where we need it, which is the infrastructure, our schools, and other things. We do not need to buy any more woods. So that's my stance. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Bob Cozob, One-eight-one College Highway, Historic Commission Chair and CPC Representative of the Historic Commission. I'm not in favor of this at all. Let's talk return on investment here. Some of the numbers that are being thrown around are kind of erroneous. If I were to say to you individually, you give... Find 3 percent... Find $3,000 and give it to me, and I will assure you that you're going to get 60 percent return. Find 1 percent, and I will assure you that you'll only get 10 percent. Which would you do? The historic preservation part of this program, since its beginning, have been... We have been used over 20 times. The National Historic Cemetery was funded... To get the national historic recognition was funded by this fund. We have restored Revolutionary War and Civil War monuments there several times, three times, and not only are we using state... Our own money, state money, but we are able to leverage that money in the case of these restorations and some others. We're able to leverage that into a 50 percent contribution from the state. This is a no-brainer. If you were to think about this individually, you would vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. No applause. No applause. You. Ms. Madison?
My name is Lawrence Mace. I'm from Hillside Meadows Drive, and I believe that you have a double impact when you go for 3 percent and use additional funds from the state to help not only purchase land but also maintain it. There's been a lot of comments with my neighbors about we have to make sure that these properties are maintained, but we're here because it's a beautiful place. It's a beautiful town, and I don't see how trying to tie some land program and conservation program with senior citizen issues makes any sense whatsoever. If we're going to save money for senior citizens, well, I got plenty of ways to do that. You talk to me, and I've got all sorts of tax things that we can do for seniors, but tying it to a conservation program, to me, is ridiculous. So I would ask that you all vote against this and keep our open lands open and make sure that we get our... At least get some part of a fair share from the state of Massachusetts. This is your time. Thank you.
Thank you. No... Please comment as you will with the vote, but no applause. Pro or con? Yes?
Christina Madsen, Forty Rattle Hill Road. I'd like to just point out to all of you that there's a handout in the back from a study that you massed the fiscal impacts of land use in Massachusetts. It indicates that it's an updated study of four South Massachusetts communities, two of which are in Western Mass, and it... The findings are that for every tax dollar taken in for new residential growth, it costs the town of... Towns of Whately and Great Barrington a dollar thirteen. New development does not bring in tax revenue. It costs the town money, and we need... This idea that we need new development for tax revenue is just not true. How many people have had their taxes go down with the new development that's taken place? I urge you to vote against Article Three.
Thank you. Next?
John Martin, One-oh-six Clerks Street. Just wanted to re...
Look louder, John.
Ice cream cone, right? Just wanted to reiterate a couple things. One, at the current 3 percent for fiscal '18, we receive $341,000, which is roughly 60 percent state match. And if it went to the proposed 1 percent, we would have got $84,000 or 19 percent, which is $256,000, a quarter of a million dollars difference. And the other thing... Hold on here. This... The first $100,000 of your value of your house is exempt from this. It just goes from $100,000 and up. And we're talking about by doing this, maybe we could build more houses. And I guess from my point of view, do I want more houses in Southampton? Because each house that we have in Southampton, every dollar they spend, it costs the town a dollar thirty-one at the latest figures that we got. And every house we build takes way open space. So do we want to keep the character of our town, or do we want to build very expensive houses? You know, we each have to make that decision, but I think this saves preservation land. It puts land for the kids like Labrie Field, Norris. You know, this is a lot of stuff that we can't do without this funding, so I'm voting against it.
Thank you. Next?
Two clarification points. That information that was just given was last year's. This year's projected to be 11 percent on 3 percent. So it is dropping, and it is dropping like a stone. That's what it... Check for the state. That's what it's projected to be. That's what the funding level's projected to be. Second to that, open space and affordable housing. Explain to me how building a $300,000 house or a $250,000 house on a parcel of land is better for the town than building a $700,000 house on that parcel of land. Your taxes are double. You still chewed up the land. So again, my point is there is no plan. There is no direction in this town. One hand says open space. Other hand says spend it all. You can't do them both. So you really have to have a strategy, and to me, what makes the most sense is build million-dollar homes, so you have to build half as many.
The volume of your voice does not support the rest of the...
Sorry. I'm just a little passionate about things. And why wouldn't you build million-dollar homes and build half of them or a third of them than build lower-income housing? And then we would get the tax roll we want, and then we would be able to buy computers for our kids in school, and we'd be able to pave our roads, and we'd be able to buy trucks and everything that we want to buy. So again, we have no plan, and that's the problem that I have with taking my money and dumping it into people that have no plan and just keep spending it.
Thank you. Next?
Vicki Morrow, Palmary Meadow Road, Town Accountant. I guess I just want to give you some round figures, for instance. If we were to drop it to 1 percent and the state was to match that 1 percent, we would get less than $100,000 in CPA funding for that year. Eighty... About $80,000 would come from collection if we decreased it to 1 percent, which is about a third of what we've committed and collected over the past five or six years. And then whatever the state match would be on that 1 percent, as we just heard, it's only one round and not three rounds. So you're looking at less than $100,000. And if you look at the doors we did at the Town Hall, the ADA doors and the handrails, that was almost $60,000 for those two projects to help people get in and out of our Town Hall building. How can you, you know, pay for that if you only have less, you know, $80,000 or $90,000 a year for projects? So I don't think we should do it.
Thank you. Next?
I don't subscribe to the fact that the town has no plan. The town has a master plan, which was approved at Town Meeting. If, as voters, we don't agree with that plan, then the place to say so is here at Town Meeting. The moderator has said, because we state... Make statements at the microphone here does not necessarily mean that they're true, and I believe the statement that was made about a plan is not true.
Next?
I call a question.
We have a call to question. We've discussed this for a while. We have a second, which I didn't call for. Do we have a second? All right. So what we're going to do is to vote to end debate. We're not voting on the article. We're going to be voting to end debate or continue debate. All those in favor of ending debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to continue the debate, please say nay. We... It's unanimous. So we're going to vote on the motion... Sorry? I'm sorry. I meant to say majority, but I haven't got it out there yet. Thank you. Teamwork by majority. Thank you. Just jump right in. So we're going to vote on the motion for Article Three. All those who want the motion for Article Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion for Article Three fails by majority. May I have a motion for Article Four, please?
Mr. Moderator, may I be recognized? Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I would like to propose, move, that we change the order of the warrant, if possible. I know you said that was possible.
I asked that at the beginning, and no one said anything.
I'm sorry. I heard it, but I didn't know that it had to be done then. Could I make that motion now?
What's your reasoning?
My reason? I would like to change the order of the warrant to now speak to the community preservation projects, which are specifically Articles Thirty-three and Thirty-four. And the reasons are as follows. We've been here close to an hour. It's a rainy night. Some people are perhaps anxious to get home and perhaps have childcare issues or they're elderly. Further, we just had an interesting debate that had directly to do with the community preservation. So I move that we change and do the Articles Thirty-three and Thirty-four at this time.
I will... I didn't ask. I will accept the motion. I would ask that this follows the budget, which is our priority for the evening. So I would entertain a vote now that we bring Articles Thirty-four...
I would like to propose, move, that we change the order of the warrant, if possible. I know you said that was possible.
I asked that at the beginning, and no one said anything.
I'm sorry, I heard it, but I didn't know that it had to be done then. Could I make that motion now?
What's your reasoning?
My reason, I would like to change the order of the warrant to now speak to the community preservation projects, which are specifically Article 33 and 34. And the reasons are as follows. We've been here close to an hour, it's a rainy night, some people are perhaps anxious to get home, and perhaps have childcare issues or they're elderly. Further, we just had an interesting debate that had directly to do with the community preservation. So I move that we change and do the Articles 33 and 34 at this time.
I will- I didn't ask. I will accept the motion. I would ask that this follows the budget, which is our priority for the evening. So I would entertain a vote now that we bring Articles 34 and 35 and put-
Second.
Thirty- thirty- thirty-
Three and four.
Thirty-three and 34, sorry. Thirty-three- teamwork, see, it works. Thirty-three and 34, and put them in between Article VIII and Article IX. Or is that the- let me check, let me check. Don't guess.
You put it after Article VIII?
After Article VIII, yes. All those in favor of taking 33 and 34-
You need a second.
We have a second.
Oh, we have a second. Good.
Yeah, second.
I like that. Teamwork, we've got a second. All right. Motion made and seconded. We have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of moving Article 33 and Article 34 immediately following Article VIII, the budget article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. It passes by vast majority, and that's what we will do. So let's continue. May I have a motion for Article IV, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adjust the eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c), to be effective for the exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2019, by increasing the income limits to $20,000 for single and $25,000 for married couples.
Thank you. Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
April West, 54 Strong Road. I'm a member of the Board of Assessors. This article refers to 41(c) in the Mass General Law's Chapter whatever, to a senior citizen's tax exemption. It- the last time the Board of Assessors did an income adjustment was in 2011. If passed, it would offer a few more opportunities to our senior citizens to qualify for a $1,000 tax exemption on their property tax. The Board of Assessors has done a two-page handout, which explains all of the other qualifications for this article, well, for this exemption that a senior citizen might need, well, will need to meet. But it will offer a few more of our senior citizens the opportunity to get a $1,000 exemption on their taxes.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition to this article? Pro, con, any more? Debate seeing none, we'll vote on motion for Article IV. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, the motion for Article IV passes unanimously. May I have a motion for Article V, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adjust the eligibility factors for property tax exemptions for senior citizens under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c), to be effective for the exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2019, by reducing the minimum age requirements from 70 years of age to 65.
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Who would like to speak on this?
April West, 54 Strong Road. Ditto what I said for the last article.
I don't think that's ever happened before. Who would like to speak in opposition? Pro, con, debate seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article V. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article V passes unanimously. May I have a motion for Article VI, please?
Mr. Moderator, Article VI. And for the next few, we are going to be reading the article and the motion. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Southampton to change the title of Board of Selectmen to the Select Board as follows, or take any other action relative thereto. Number one, amend Article III by changing the title from Selectmen to Select Board by substituting the reference in Section 1 from Selectmen to Select Board. And three, by deleting existing Section 7 and replacing it with the following language: There shall be a select board of five members elected for three-year overlapping terms. Such select boards shall have all the powers and duties of a Board of Selectmen for purposes of any and all federal, state, and local laws referring to Board of Selectmen or Selectmen, including but not limited to the Massachusetts General Law, Code of Massachusetts Regulations, and any bylaws and special acts applicable to the town of Southampton. And delete the words Board of Selectmen and Selectmen in each place in which they appear and insert in their place the word Select Board, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to move that the town vote to amend the town bylaws, Article III, Section 1, and Section 7 by amending the existing language as set forth in the Article VI of the warrant for the May 7, 2019 annual town meeting, or take any other action.
Thank you. All right, that's not part of it. Motion. Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Francine Tishman, Glendale Road, representing the Bylaws Committee. This article is pretty self-explanatory, and we're in the process of updating the bylaws, including the language. So changing from Board of Selectmen to Select Board is certainly a much more inclusive term to reference the people sitting here and people who would be joining the Select Board sometime in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Debate? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article VI. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article VI passes unanimously. May I have a motion for Article VII, please?
Mr. Moderator, we're going to take no action on Article VII.
Motion made, take no action, do her a second. Motion made and seconded. Anyone to give a brief description while we're passing over? Taking no action. Taking no action.
Mr. Moderator, we discussed this as a board, and before we change the personal policy and procedure board from an elected board to an appointed board, we have some work to do with regard to bylaws and rules and procedures.
Thank you.
So we want to be able to do that.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Les? All in favor to take no action, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying no.
I got it.
It's unanimous, we will take no action for the motion under Article VII. May I have a motion for Article VIII, please?
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote, Article VIII, to see if the town will vote to fix salaries of all elected officials for the fiscal year 2020 for the period for July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020, and further to raise inappropriate monies as identified in the town's annual operating budget as attached for fiscal year 2020, or take any other relative action thereto.
Or amend your motion or not take any action thereto.
Sure. The motion, move that the town raise and appropriate $17,560,797.03 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during fiscal year 2020, as shown in the town's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2020, as shown in the column labeled BOSS, Board of Selectmen Recommended Fiscal Year 20 Level Funded Plus 2%.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. As moderator, I divide the question, as we do annually. We will take each section of the budget, we will discuss it, ask questions, we will vote on each section, and then go to the next section. When we're done, there will be no need to vote on the entire budget. So the next one is general government. And the amount is $694,869.55. Anyone like to address this, please? Nobody in opposition? No? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Did I hear nay? Okay. General government passes unanimously. Now we'll talk to public safety, $1,909,469.84. Who would like to address that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the police department budget. You want me to read the whole motion?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to amend the police department budget in the public safety section of the fiscal year 20 Southampton operating budget as follows. The change is police chief's salary from $98,838 to $106,000. Police department wages from $642,600 to $588,354.34. Police incentive from- that's the educational incentive, from $42,717.60 to $34,642.37. Police department overtime from $58,140 to $75,059.89. Police department expenses from $62,000 to $69,837. Police equipment maintenance, regional lockup assessment, police department building expense, and building custodial wages will remain the same. So the new total goes from $963,392.70 to $932,990.70, which is a net reduction of $30,402.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
We have an amendment, and we'd like to have somebody address that. And please confirm, this was discussed last night, and the public televised the Select Board meeting and voted on unanimously by the Select Board.
That is correct. And the police chief is here to give some background to that.
Thank you.
Ian Ellingsworth, Chief of Police. With regards to this, with the reconfiguration of the budget, I recognize that the compensation of wages was reduced by about, was approximately $30,400.
A little closer, Chief.
The compensation for wages was reduced for my budget for about $30,402. So therefore, I'd like to give that back to the town.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to comment. This was, I think, a very good example of working with the department heads where they realized the town needs extra funding. And the police chief sat down with us, and we went over the various line items, we were came- able to come up with a savings of over $30,000. So I'd just like to commend them for that and say thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're going to vote on the amendment as read, and then we're going to vote on the public safety, the amended public safety budget. All those in favor of the amendment as discussed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. So the amendment passes unanimously. Now we have an amended public safety budget. Any comments, questions? All those in favor of the amended public safety budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The amended public safety budget passes unanimously. Let's talk about education. We- we had discussion, and there is a desire, and as moderator, I will divide the question and take out- and other towns use the word "hold." We have not used "hold" in at least 20 years, and tonight's not the night we're going to introduce it. So we're basically splitting, dividing the question, and we're taking out the Hampshire Regional Operating Budget. So we'll have two votes for the education budget this year. Who would like to address this, please?
Am I- I'm going with this, right? Yeah.
Do you want to talk on the Norris?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Moderator, I motion to amend-
Introduce yourself.
Matt Rowland, 16 Mountain Road. I move to amend the Norris Elementary School operating line account in the education section of the fiscal year 2020 Southampton operating budget by increasing the elementary school operating budget from $4,636,840.28 to $4,667,242.28. And by funding the increase with the $30,402 of available funds created with the amended decrease to the police department budget.
We have a motion to amend, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Motion to amend and second. Who would like to address this? Who would like to support this amendment? Or explain it?
Mr. Moderator, I can speak to this. So in our deliberations, this was publicized in our Select Board meetings, it went late into the night during our deliberations to balance your budget this year. We recognize that there was a- there was a deficit in the Norris Elementary School budget in comparison to other town budgets, and we are- we are basically trying to bridge this gap. And we're still not all the way there, so we're not getting- we're not getting all the way there on the ask, but we're getting most of the way there. And so there's still going to be some struggles there at Norris Elementary School, but this is going to go a long way towards- towards that effort that we tried to achieve that evening on the Select Board.
Thank you. Anybody else?
John Martin, Clark Street. One of the items that we want to make sure that we're addressing in this is that the Norris School Committee, through Aaron Kuchar, the chair, brought up the fact that they would like to have the language-based- can you hear me? The language-based program at Norris School rather than sending the students out of area. And it costs us, I believe, around $70,000 or $75,000 every time we send a student out for the- that language-based program. And I'm not talking about, you know, learning French or learning something like that. It's the students who have problem with the actual language, and they need special care. So now we're sending them out. So this is to fund roughly, I believe, $150,000 for this language-based program where they're going to establish it here at Norris. And what we hope is that the kids, instead of going out of area, are going to stay here at Norris. And as they come up through the schools, we'll be able to handle them here. And hopefully somewhere down the road, we'll be able to take school choice money in for those programs. So we want to bring our kids here, we want the kids in town that need this program to get it here in town rather than sending them, because it- it costs us tuition and also transportation. So this $30,000 adds to, I think roughly $120,000 that we put in the original budget to make the program almost complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello. Eliza Pluta, Principal of Norris School. I am not a town resident. Am I able to speak?
You're not a town resident?
Right.
No, you can't speak. We have to ask permission of the town.
Right.
And your affiliation is?
Principal of Norris School.
And I'm sorry, we didn't touch base before.
That's okay.
All those in favor allowing the principal of the Norris School to speak for future meetings and today's, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please.
Thank you. I just want you to know that the original proposal of the budget does include us having to cut $54,000. So with the addition of this $30,000, our cuts would only be $24,298 from our budget. And it does include the language-based program that the previous speaker was speaking to. And with that language-based program, we would decrease the amount of money having to go to out-of-district placements. And in the future, would love to take in school of choice students into that program if we're able to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll vote on the amendment to the budget. All those in favor of increasing the budget by $30,402, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. So the amendment passes unanimously. Now we will vote on the entire education budget without the Hampshire Regional Operating Line. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. So the- that part of the education budget is passed unanimously. Now we will talk about the Hampshire Regional Operating Budget. Who would like to address that? Anybody would like to speak? Just simply come up to the microphone. You don't need an invitation.
Francine Tishman, Glendale Road. I have the good fortune of being the Select Board liaison to both the Norris School Committee and the Hampshire Regional School Committee. And I want to commend the staff and the administration at both schools for a great job throughout the year. They deal with some very difficult issues throughout the year, and they do a wonderful job supporting your children as they make their way from kindergarten through 12th grade. Just to give you a little bit of background information, the average class size at Norris is 20 to 21 students per class. is twenty to twenty-one students per class. The average class size at Hampshire Regional is sixteen students per class. The direction that was given to all departments in preparing the 2020 budget was to arrive at a level-funded budget level to the previous year of 2019. And while both schools did accomplish that task, there was a situation at Hampshire Regional whereby their projected revenue for 2020 was going to be, go down. So in order to maintain level funding, the assessment to the five member towns had to go up. Southampton's share of that assessment was going to be another hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So our portion increased rather than stayed the same from last year by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. A little more background information, the cost per student is estimated at Norris School to be twelve thousand dollars per year. The cost per student at Hampshire Regional is estimated to be seventeen thousand dollars per year. And there's that gap there that obviously we're interested in closing for reasons that were just described as the need of the language-based program at Norris. We are the first of the five towns to vote on the budget. So as you all know, the process for doing this is two of the five towns, in order to reject the budget, would have to vote against it. If one votes against it and the budget passes in the other four towns, it's a done deal, and it is what it is you see in your packet. So I guess, you know, listening to people before me, you understand that we are looking for money in every which way that we can. And so we are hoping that in some way we might find a little relief on the Hampshire Regional School Budget from what has been proposed, but that's subject to the other four towns voting on this budget. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
This is controversial at best, because, I hate to say, it seems like we're pitting one school against the other, which we don't want to do. But one of the issues is, you know, as a select board, as a member of the select board, I want to get that right, we have to look out for both sides of the equation, and we're looking for more funding. And up at the Hampshire Regional, they are level-funded, like the previous speaker said, but because of the revenue shortfall, it's roughly a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars coming to the town. If we vote down this budget for Hampshire Regional, what happens is it goes back to the school committee if another town of the five towns votes it down also. Then they have to sit down, and they have to look at where can they make some cuts or come up with some additional money to then bring it back to the towns again, so we have another vote on it. So this vote is just one of two of the five towns needed, and it goes back to the school committee, then we can have a discussion on where the cuts would be. If they cut a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from Southampton's portion, which is five point two million dollars, it's roughly a two point four percent cut. So there's a couple of ways of doing that from our point of view, and speakers behind me will give their side to that too, which is why we're here, so the voters can decide. So if they don't want to make a two percent cut, they have additional funds here, and two of them that were brought up at the five-town meetings we've had, we had one in January and one last month, there's an account called an E and D account, which is excess and deficiency account. And over the last three fiscal years or so, there's roughly a half a million dollars in there. And that is for, they will tell you, in case there's an emergency, the roof leaks, they need a new roof, all of that, but consistently over the years, it's roughly at a half a million dollars. They take some out, they use it for projects, they put the funding back in. So it kind of revolves around there. And there's also a school of choice account, which has roughly, last number I had was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, rightfully so, they're going to say, well, if school of choice stops today, we need that money to transition, because we won't have it. And that's very true. Some people call them rainy day funds. You know, on the way in, it was raining for me, but that's just coincidental, I guess. So that's another way. They can take a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars between those two funds, and still have a lot left in the funds, or they can actually go back and look at the budget and say, we're going to reduce the budget by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So what we're asking you here is to vote down the budget, so it goes back to the school committee, and we'll see if one other town votes it down, then the school committee will sit down and try to look at where they can make some cuts. Thanks.
Who would like to speak next? Sir?
Hi. Aaron Osborne, Superintendent of Schools. I am not a resident, so.
Okay. We'll bet him. All those in favor of having him speak, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. You can speak tonight and any other future.
Hi. So first and foremost, some numbers were shared on per-student spending. I'd like to share with you some per-student spending numbers for schools throughout the area. So these were 2017 numbers, the most recent posted.
A little closer to the mic, so we can all hear.
I'm sorry, the most recent posted on the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website. So Hampshire Regional is in fact at seventeen thousand dollars per student, seventeen thousand and six dollars per student, in fact. Comparable middle high schools, Frontier was at seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty-four thousand. Mahar was at seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight per student, and Amherst, which is a bit of an outlier, was at twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars per student. So those are comparable middle high schools. Obviously, I believe Amherst is a bit of an outlier, a little higher, but among those, we are still the lowest cost of comparable middle high schools when they're separated out as regional middle high schools. So elementary schools, Southampton sits at twelve thousand, sixty-eight dollars per student. Williamsburg sits at fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty, while still funding the seventeen thousand dollars per student to Hampshire Regional. Chesterfield-Goshens, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars per student. West Hampton, sixteen thousand, sixty-seven. When we get out of the Hampshire region, elementary comps among Western Mass, Conway sits at eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars per student, that's another elementary school. Deerfield at fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight. Sunderland at thirteen, three seventy-two. Whately at sixteen, seven thirteen. New Salem-Wendell at fifteen, five seventy-nine. Orange is the next lowest at thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-six per student. That is one thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars per student more than Norris. Translating that to the number of students at Norris, for example, though, would result in six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, right? So those towns, each one of those towns, even Orange, if anyone is familiar with Orange, manages to fund their middle high school at over seventeen thousand dollars per student, yet fund their elementary at least twelve hundred dollars more than what Southampton funds its elementary school at. I absolutely don't.
You don't ask, you're addressing it to the moderator. You address your remarks to the moderator, not to the audience.
Yes. So that's a pretty significant disparity, I think. You know, we had Mr. Rowland coming up explaining that, you know, there is a disparity there, and it's a significant disparity. The disparity isn't just between Hampshire Regional and Norris, it's between Norris and other elementary schools throughout the region. We're shortchanging kids. When you look at the number of students in a class, Norris sends a lot of students out. That impacts us negatively for cost, we send them out of district. Hampshire Regional has programs, special education programs, that are designed to keep students in district. Those are smaller special education classrooms that do impact that student size. There are programs that we have that keep students in that are by their nature smaller classes as well at Hampshire Regional. At the middle high school level, you start getting into AP classes. AP classes by their nature have fewer students in them. So there are some things that aren't really inherent in those numbers that sort of skew things when you talk about number of students per class. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next?
Hello, Elaine Buckley, Manhattan Road. I guess I need a point of clarification. If we vote to decrease the Hampshire Regional budget tonight, and then it goes, if I'm understanding this correctly, it goes to the five-school committee to decide how, what's going to happen next? Do we have another chance to approve or disapprove what the changes are, or is this it? If we vote tonight to decrease it, is that it? Or do we get to vote on anything? For instance, if they decide the only way, if they have to eliminate programs, for instance, at Hampshire Regional, do we get to say, that's okay, you can eliminate these programs? I just want clarification, I don't know.
We have your question, we have your questions, and the answer is behind you.
Oh, good.
I told you I'd smile tonight.
If I forget part of it, what we're voting on tonight is not reducing the budget. We're voting on sending the Hampshire Regional School budget back to the school committee, with the caveat, one other town also has to do that. So if we do it and the other four towns pass it, it stays the way it is. So one other town has to do it. But we're just sending it back to the school committee, and assuming another town does the same, they will relook at the budget, the total school committee will relook at the budget, come up with suggestions and ideas, then every one of the five towns brings it back to the town meeting again and says, we've reduced it by X amount, here's what we've done to reduce it, and you all get to vote on it. And if you don't like that.
Not you all, you address to the moderator.
You all, Mr. Moderator?
You all, you all come back now, are you here?
Sorry. So the town gets a chance to vote on it again. You're not voting to decrease it, just to send it back for reconsideration.
Thank you. That answer your question? Yes, it did. Next person, please. Thank you.
Kristin Smitty, Hampshire Regional High School Principal, requesting permission to speak.
I don't know if we ever had that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that the budget that is being proposed already has some cuts to different programming, so it includes seventy-four thousand dollars in program cuts at the time when we proposed the budget, and since then, fifteen thousand dollars worth of cuts have also come to light, resulting in eighty-nine thousand dollars worth of cuts already. And that includes extracurricular activities for students, professional development for teachers, supplies for students, and as Superintendent Osborne said, there are a number of different things that high schools are required to do that elementary schools are not. So the state puts forth graduation requirements for students to be able to be considered for four-year state colleges that the high schools need to offer to students in order to be competitive. So if we have, if the high school has programmatic cuts and students are not able to access the programs that would make them competitive compared to other local high schools, then students will choice out of Hampshire Regional High School, resulting in an additional reduction to our budget. For the first time ever, we have a program that allows students to access not only four-year accredited universities, but Ivy League schools, and this is the first time, I think, that a lot of staff can remember that we have students able to access those colleges. So it's a really great thing for students to be able to experience to come to Hampshire Regional High School, and additional programmatic cuts would not give them that opportunity. So I urge you to vote the level-funded budget as presented, because if more is cut, then programs will be reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next? Nope, 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 she's already spoke.
Margaret Larson, Nine David Street, and I'm a member of the Hampshire Regional School Committee. So I would also urge that you vote in favor of the level-funded budget. Schools in Western Massachusetts, particularly regional schools, are experiencing significantly declining enrollment, and we are as well. One of the ways that we continue to support our programs is through school choice. We get over a hundred kids' school choice coming in, which is about nine hundred thousand dollars. My concern is, is that if we cut more programs, including actual programs that kids might need in order to go on to college, that we will start losing that school choice money. It's my understanding that that's what happened at Norris Elementary, and I feel like we might start repeating some of the problems that we've experienced here at the elementary school. I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that we are pitting two schools against each other. I think both schools need to be funded adequately, so that we're preparing all of our students at the elementary level to come to the high school, and I know the other towns have worked very hard to do that, and it would also make me uncomfortable to see us reduce programs at the high school when other towns have contributed to those programs. So I would urge you to continue to support the high school at the level that we've been funding it.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? No applause.
Bob Barkum, Pleasant Street. I'm all for tradition, but I got a two-part question. Why do most departments in town have like twelve lines for their budget and the school has two? And how do we change that?
Would like to answer that question. Vicki.
Vicki Marl, Palmory Meadow Road. By state statute, the towns only appropriate money to the school committees, and the school committees are responsible for those budgets. They are the ones who decide how the line items work. All we can do as a town is give those, give that money to the schools, and they're responsible for those line items. So we don't necessarily have to show that in our budgets. You can ask them for it, but we don't have to show that.
Answer your question? Thank you. I did. Who, no, no.
Well, I was answering a question, but I was going to say something, so do I have to get in the back of the line again?
I don't know, you're there, go ahead.
I guess just a point of interest, as a town, we don't necessarily agree with, based on a DLS report that was done for the town in 2014, to take our free cash or stabilization funds to fund the budget. So how can we ask the schools to do the same thing with their free cash money?
Thank you. Blue shirt. He hasn't spoken. No, he hasn't spoken. You haven't spoken.
Jim Seeny, High Street. I just heard the comment about the stabilization funds, but I do have questions about that. If a stabilization fund is never used to help stabilize, I just want to know more about those so-described rainy day accounts. They seem, as they were described, they're pretty stable, and therefore, I'm wondering if they're underutilized. I'd just like to hear more about how those funds are used or funded and what that means, because it wasn't described adequately for me.
Okay.
Hi. I'm still good to speak?
Oh, yes. You're answering your question. You're answering your question.
Okay, just clarify. So those, you know, quote-unquote rainy day funds are used to offset what can be very, very significant unexpected costs that schools face. So, for example, I live in Amherst, Massachusetts. We have two bridges that have been out. The first has been out for five years. When that bridge went out, they just closed the road and said, well, when we have the money, we'll do it. And it's, you know, costing hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair that bridge, and there's another one that will be closed until they have the funds to repair that bridge. When we get a very high-cost special education student come into the district, we have no choice but to immediately start paying for that student. Our situation right now, for example, at Norris is that we've had to place some students in out-of-district placements at extensive costs that we can't kick down the road, we can't say, well, we'll pay that next year, or we'll pay that when we have money. It is an immediate need. The same with our school facilities. We had a flood at Hampshire Regional this year. We absolutely, in order to keep the school running, we had to repair that immediately. We did not come back to the towns and ask for more money. We were able to take that out, and insurance helped as well. So a single out-of-district student can cost a hundred and fifty to even, I have seen an out-of-district student cost three hundred thousand dollars a year. So if you think of that, if we had that, and a student at that cost come into our district, that would wipe out either one of those accounts immediately. So that's a real challenge we face. I'm not saying we're going to get one of those students, but those students exist, and there's the possibility that that could happen. So we're not just putting it aside. For many years, Hampshire Regional has been cutting into those rainy day funds, so those rainy day funds were larger at one time, and we've been cutting into them. The goal is to kind of stop cutting into them so much. The goal is to kind of stop cutting into them so much, so that we do have a rainy day fund for if and when those very high-cost special education students come, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. That answer your question? Great. Actually, who's next?
Just on behalf of the select board, we are not proposing that the school cut programs. We are just asking that the school committee go back and look at its budget, look at the kind of continuing balance in that excess and deficiency fund of a half a million dollars every year, and see if there can't be some savings realized there that would bring some, you know, return some money back to the town that we desperately need for other programs and services. That's it. I mean, we don't want to compromise the education at all.
Thank, thank, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, I didn't mean to cut you short. You're good?
Hi, Kristen Smithy, principal of Hampshire Regional High School. I just wanted to add some clarity to what Superintendent Osborne said. So by law, regional schools are allowed to have the excess and deficiency funds, unlike municipal-town schools, because if, God forbid, the roof did cave in at Hampshire Regional High School, these excess and deficiency accounts would, it allows us to use those funds right away, instead of having, instead of having to go to each town in our region to request money to make those repairs. So whereas the town has stabilization funds in case something happened to the Norris School, there would simply have to be one vote in order to appropriate those funds to Norris, whereas at Hampshire Regional High School, we would need to go to all five towns to get the funding if anything were to happen, which is why the town, which is why the regional high school is authorized to have those accounts.
Thank you. And Red Shirt, you were first. You haven't spoken, and then-
Good evening. Josh Sterns from Jonathan Jud Circle. And everything that I've heard here tonight suggests that our schools and the leadership of our schools, including the school committee, is operating in a very fiscally responsible way. We hear about the incredibly small per-student budgets in comparison to other towns and cities, and I believe that we should fund them at the level funding that's been requested, not ask them to go back and make further cuts, because they're clearly taking deep responsibility with our tax dollars, and treating it with respect already. And I believe that what they've asked for is a fair and adequate amount, and we should vote level funding.
Thank you.
Barbara Leflam, 20 Cook Road. I'd like to call the question, please.
We've discussed this enough. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So we have a motion to end debate. All those in favor of ending debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
We have majority, and we will end debate. Now we will vote on the line item under the education budget. Hampshire Regional operating, $5,219,017. All those in favor of approving that number, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, it passes by a majority. Now we will talk public works. Okay, he wants to count the vote, so I need six people to stand up to support counting the vote. I need seven people who wish to count the vote. I see three, four. Okay, good. Counters, please. We're going to vote again with your cards. Huh? No, we got counters. We got counters. The counters will come to the front. All those in favor of the Hampshire Regional operating line as exists, please raise your hand high with your cards. To be counted. Keep them up. Keep them up. Are we good? And there's one up here. Okay, put them down? All right.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Keep them up. They count from front to back. They're supposed to.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. We do this out loud on the mic, so y'all can do your counting with me.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Confirming, confirming the moderator's call, the Hampshire Regional operating budget passes by 117 to 33. Now we will go to public works. We got three more items on the budget. Public Works, $861,497.38. Anyone want to comment? Pro, con, sing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of public works, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. All right, the budget for public works passes unanimously. Health and Human Services, $123,648.52. Anyone like to address this? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the Health and Human Services budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The Health and Human Services budget passes unanimously. Culture and Recreation, $169,335.34. Anyone want to address this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The budget for Culture and Recreation, Recreation, passes unanimously. Three more. Seeing no one speak on this, or against it, we'll vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the employee benefits passes unanimously. Now the budget for Debt Service Principal, $176,650. Comments? None, we'll vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. That part of the budget passes unanimously. And the last part of the budget is debt service interest for $53,342.89. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, seeing nobody's going to speak on it.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Well, that part passes unanimously. We are done with the budget. And we will go to Article 33. May I hear a motion for Article 33, please? You have to read the article.
The whole thing, yes. All right. "To see if the town will vote to hear and act pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2020, Community Preservation Budget, and to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund the following sums of money as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other necessary and proper expenses in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, with each item to be considered as a separate appropriation. Administrative expenses, $7,500. Reserves, from fiscal year 20, estimated revenues for Historic Resources Reserve, $27,000. From fiscal year 20, estimated revenues for Community Housing Reserve, $27,000. And from fiscal year 20, estimated revenues for Open Space Reserve, $27,000, or take any action relative thereto. I move, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2020, and to allocate sums of money from the Community Preservation Fund as presented in Article 33 of the warrant of the May 7, 2019 Annual Town Meeting."
Motion is made, or air a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Pomeroy Meadow Road. These are basic housekeeping articles for the community preservation that by state statutes requires us to put money in administrative expenses, and put 10% of estimated revenues into those three particular categories for CPA funding.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Anybody else seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 33, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 33 passes unanimously.
There we go.
Now for Article 34, we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation, so whoever's going to be doing that, if that's still the case, we need to have the projector over there. I'll get the podium out of the way, and we'll pull the screen down.
Mr. Moderator, do you want me to read this while they're doing it? This is a lot of reading.
We'll take a recess for two minutes, and then we'll proceed. Yeah. Okay, seventh inning stretch is over. Please take your seats. I need a reading of the motion for Article 34. We may need some more lights.
All right, start reading, John.
Or we can use the lights at that mic, doesn't matter. Is Matt going to be reading? Hey, Matt, Matt Rowan?
You want me to read it? Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, start, yeah.
Okay.
Please take your seats.
Okay, I'm going to read the whole article here. To see if the town will vote, A, to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds-
Please be quiet.
... accept gifts.
Please be quiet, please sit down. Thank you. People in the aisles? Thank you.
You ready?
All right, start.
Mr. Moderator, "To see if the town, A, to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds, accept gifts and grants and/or borrow the sum of $660,000 for the purpose of acquiring for the purposes set forth below certain property located at Pomeroy Meadow Road, Southampton, shown as lots 1-
All right, we got to turn the fans off.
Yeah, I'm still on it, okay, thank you. "Shown as lots 1E, Lot 2E, Lot 3E, Lot 4E, and Lot 5E, on a plan entitled, quote, 'Plan of Land in Southampton, Massachusetts, surveyed for John and Donna Gosh,' end quote, Gush, excuse me, dated December 27, 2008, prepared by Heritage Surveys, Inc., recorded with the Hampshire Registry of Deeds and Plan Book 243, Page 77, containing approximately 14.382 acres of land, or to acquire one or more of the aforementioned lots for such lesser sum as the Select Board deems to be in the best interest of the town, provided, however, Lot 2E may be acquired pursuant to the town's statutory right of first refusal under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 61, Section 8."
And I'm going to interject for a second. The "or to acquire one or more lots" was added in late this afternoon under motion. Moderator knows, believes it's in the four corners of the original article, so that has been added to the motions that you have in your hands. Please continue.
B, that "to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow the sum of $660,000 in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, and/or Chapter 44B, Section 11, and any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes therefore, and in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied." C, that the Select Board and/or Board of Water Commissioners is authorized to acquire said property by gift, negotiated purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, including pursuant to the town's statutory right of first refusal pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 61, Section 8, as may be amended for water supply protection purposes pursuant to Chapter 40, Sections 38, 39B, and 41, and subject to the protections of Article 97 of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, and that said property shall be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Water Commissioners, and further, that pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 15B, before any portion of this property can be transferred from the town to a different ownership or control, or to a different use, approval of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Control must be obtained. D, that the Select Board and/or Board of Water Commissioners is authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any funds that may be provided by the Commonwealth or other public or private sources to defray all or a portion of the costs of said acquisition, including but not limited to grants and/or reimbursement from the Commonwealth under DWSP, Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant. Upon such terms and conditions as the Water Commissioners with the approval of the Select Board shall determine to be appropriated- but not limited to all applications deemed necessary for grants and/or reimbursements from the DWSP grant program, and to receive and accept such grants and/or reimbursements for this purpose, and/or any grants or reimbursement programs in any way connected with the scope of this article, and to accept and expend any grants and/or reimbursements that may be provided to defray all or a portion of the costs of said acquisition, and to repay all or a portion of the sum borrowed hereunder, and that the Select Board and/or the Water Commissioners be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any instruments, including a grant of perpetual water supply restriction to the Commonwealth, or a nonprofit corporation or trust that meets the requirements of General Laws, Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33, as may be necessary to effect said acquisition or obtain such grant. E, to authorize the Select Board and the Board of Water Commissioners to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this acquisition and grant of a perpetual water supply restriction.
Motion made, or you hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Can I speak about?
Yes. That microphone over there on the...
I've got it here.
You're good, you're good.
Good. Hello, I'm Kurt Bojali, Water Commissioner, Strong Road, Southampton. Approval of Article 34 by two-thirds majority vote tonight will allow the Water Commissioners to proceed with a drinking water protection effort, first proposed to the Water Commissioners in July of 2018. The proposal was that if the town could acquire land on 68 Pomeroy Meadow Road, as a subject of Article 34 tonight, an adjacent landowner would donate a conservation restriction on an additional 75 acres in that area. And from a Water Commissioner's point of view or perspective, this would amount to approximately up to 90 acres of protected land for only the cost of the first land that is acquired, which is on Article 34. If, if it made sense to protect land in that area to begin with for drinking water protection, and it does. A 1987 hydrogeologic study for the town had identified the recharge area in the vicinity of the Pomeroy Meadow Road as a likely primary source of recharge to the College Highway well, and therefore is of utmost importance for protection. And knowing that, the Water Commissioners contacted Bob Newton, a geology professor at Smith College, who's got a great knowledge of this area, to ask if the 1987 study conclusion was still valid. In his August 2019 report to the Water Commissioners, a copy of which was handed out as a handout tonight, was provided as a handout, he verified that it was still valid. On the screen in front of us is Professor Newt. It's showing a cross-section of land in Southampton. Isn't this great? Professor Newton is pointing...
A little closer to...
Oh, excuse me, thanks, thank you, Moderator. Pointing to our town well, which is located on College Highway Route 10, near the intersection of Glendale Road and Route 10, which has a substantial clay and silt deposit over it. The well has to penetrate through their clay and silt to get down to what's called the sand and gravel deposits, that are water-bearing deposits and where we draw our water. These sand and gravel deposits were left by the glacier about 6,000 years ago, which Professor Newton will go on to explain, but some of them come to the surface and are at the surface. And this is the recharge area along Pomeroy Meadow Road. It's a sand and gravel deposit that delivers water to our town well, and we will get back to Professor Newton in a moment. But first, to orient ourselves to the what, where, and why. Where and what? Here we are in our school, Pomeroy Meadow Road, Walcott Road, everybody oriented. This is the 14.4 acres that's in Article 34 that we're looking to acquire tonight by two-thirds vote. This area has been divided up into five lots, referenced as 1E, 2E, 3E, 4E, and 5E in Article 34. This is the area that if we can acquire land in this area, the adjacent landowner up here with the 75 acres will donate a conservation restriction to the town, to the Water Commissioners.
Let's see. I want to interject for a second. As true as that may be, we are only voting on the 14-plus acres tonight.
Tonight, that's right. So this is a key issue tonight, whether we go ahead and acquire this and allow the Selectmen to negotiate to acquire all of this land, hopefully, or some. And we'll wait till this comes in, and then we'll back off and show the 75 acres of donated conservation. Yes. Oh, excuse me. A conservation restriction, a CR is a conservation restriction, where the land is protected from future development. And from a water supply protection perspective, that's great. That protects our drinking water as much as acquiring the land would, or just about as much. Another view of where our well is in town and where the area we're looking to acquire, the distance between the two. And one more look at where and why we're doing this. We're up in this area off of Pomeroy Meadow Road, the town well is down here. What's also important on this superficial geology map is the orange colors are the permeable sand and gravels. The blue and the other colors are the more impermeable silts and clays that much of Southampton has, and Professor Newton will go into this a little more. He'll explain something interesting, how the glacier 6,000 years ago deposited these sands and gravels, the glacier melted, we had a lake here for thousands of years, the lake deposited fine-grained materials, silts and clays, and that's what we're dealing with geologically here in Southampton. And at this point, we'll hear more from Professor Newton as we move out of this area. This is called the Ken Burns Zoom, by the way. I learned that from East Hampton Media. They're sand and gravel deposits, anybody seen the edge of a sandbank? That's what we're dealing with as impermeable materials.
You have the glacier sitting at the bottom of the valley.
Okay, volume, I need help with volume here.
You have these two little valleys, either side of the valley, right, legal to the bottom of the screen, and that mountain...
We're now hearing Professor Newton.
...you're saying gravel deposits up on both sides, and then when it melts away, you know, everything you have...
Is that the best volume we can get from him?
You have the glacier sitting in the bottom of the valley, sort of blocking everything you have.
Don't try this at home.
That's not gonna work. What? That's gonna start tomorrow.
Talking about recharge.
We can do it?
Do you have it plugged in? No, it's okay, we're good, we're gonna be fine. 111.
Bear with us, teamwork again.
This was working during practice, practice. Yeah, it was supposed to be all set up. Yeah, I'll just take it from here.
I'll try, I'll try to just take it from here. Matt, you're right in the... He's explaining the sand and gravels that were deposited by the glacier, he's emphasizing that it's those areas that we want to protect. That area with silt and clay is not as important as it is the area to the outside, and it's hard for people to understand that the area right next to the well may not be as important to protect as areas further away that have those sand and gravel deposits. He emphasizes that point during this presentation that he gave in March to the town to let us be aware of how important this area is. And that will be pretty much it. So that hopefully explains the what, where, and why. Let's see, let's stop this. Explains the what, where, and why of what we're doing in Article 34, kind of simplify that article a bit. So we get up to 90 acres of protection, protected land along the Pomeroy Meadow Road primary recharge area, at a cost to the town of approximately $5,000 per protected acre, if we take advantage of the state grant that we did receive. We received a state grant of $216,000 to help defray the cost of this project by first acquiring the land on 68 Pomeroy Meadow Road at tonight's town meeting by two-thirds majority vote. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone want to speak in opposition?
I'll hang it up here.
Anyone else? Come right up to the mic.
Christina Madsen, Rattle Hill Road. Although the presentation wasn't, we didn't hear from Professor Newton, it is clear that his assessment and the assessment of the Wayrun Report, excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
The comments and maps that are available at the back all indicate that this land is important as a recharge area and worthy of conservation. It's been briefly mentioned that we also have received a $216,000 water supply protection grant from the state, which also indicates its value to the town for water protection. So in and of itself, this land is worthy of being conserved, but it is part of a larger conservation project, and that involves my sister and me. So in order for you to make a fully informed decision tonight, I'm going to describe what our role is. Shortly after it became known that the land was, that the Pomeroy Meadow land was going to be available for sale, and that's a portion of the former Kanopka property on Pomeroy Meadow, I had a conversation with Professor Newton and asked him if such a small parcel as 15 acres was worth going after. He responded immediately saying, absolutely. You have to start somewhere, and if you keep losing important land, small parcel by small parcel, you're going to end up with nothing. Save what you can. So, as I said, in and of itself, this land is important. So to describe what our participation is, as I said, the 14.4 acres is part of a two-part project. The Madsen family land, now owned by my sister and me, consists of roughly 80 acres on Rattle Hill Road. It extends east from Rattle Hill down to the backside of the building lots on Pomeroy Meadow, and a portion of it abuts the former Kanopka parcel. Let's see, sorry. Some of our land, the lower portion of it, the eastern portion of it, also lies in the primary recharge area, but it is all upslope. So all of the water that's draining off of our land is draining right into the recharge area. So when it might, when it first became evident that some of the former Kanopka property might be sold, I attended a Water Commission meeting and asked if they could confirm the importance of that land to our water supply. Kurt Bojali was familiar with the Wayrun Report and described the hydrogeology of that area. So on that afternoon, I told the Water Commission that if they were interested in seeing that that, the 14.4 acres protected, then my sister and I would donate a conservation restriction, and this would be a conservation restriction to a land trust, to create a larger block of land. However beneficial small parcels are, larger parcels have a bigger impact. The scope of the proposed project is this, if you vote, oh, excuse me, if voters approve the town's acquisition of the 14.4 acre parcel on the east side of Pomeroy Meadow, Andrea, my sister, and I will donate a conservation restriction to permanent, to a local, to a land trust to permanently protect our land. And I'm going to make it very clear that we're donating a conservation restriction, we are not donating the land. The land will remain in our ownership so that it will never require town monies to maintain or monitor it, but it will remain undeveloped in perpetuity. By making this commitment, we will be relinquishing development rights for eight frontage lots on Rattle Hill Road, as well as incurring the costs of having the conservation drafted. You're being offered the opportunity to help secure the town's drinking water supply. Tonight Andrea and I, who would like to be here, but she's traveling, would like Southampton residents to demonstrate a similar commitment to conserving priority lands by supporting the town's acquisition of this 14.4 acre parcel. Undeveloped land is more than just real estate. Our well-being, even our survival, depends on a healthy and intact natural landscape. I urge you to vote in favor. I urge the voters to support Article 34. Thank you.
Thank you. More applause. Would like to speak in opposition to this article, anyone? All right, please speak.
Mr. Moderator, good evening. Edward Gibson, Town Administrator for the Town of Southampton. Just some background, would like everyone to know that the Board has, the Board of Selectmen has voted to exercise its right of first refusal on Lot 2E, one of the five lots on Pomeroy Meadow Road. Currently, we do not have agreement on the other four lots, but we are aggressively pursuing that. I am the agent and working on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Water Commissioners. I am very hopeful that we will end up with a successful negotiation and be able to purchase all five lots. If we are, we have been awarded the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant of $216,000. That's a reimbursable grant, so the town would actually have to purchase, close on this property, pay for the property, meet some conditions of the grant, and then we would be reimbursed the $216,000. That's why we're asking for the entire purchase price plus closing costs and survey costs of $660,000. I will let everyone know, including yourself, that if the town is not able to acquire... Just some background, uh, would, would like everyone to know that the board has, the Board of Selectmen has, uh, voted to exercise its right of first refusal on Lot 2E, one of the five lots on Pomeroy Meadow Road. Currently, we do not have agreement on the other four lots, but we are aggressively pursuing that. I am the agent and be, working on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Water Commissioners. Uh, I am very hopeful that we will end up with a successful negotiation and be able to purchase all five lots. If we are, uh, we have been awarded the Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant of two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. That's a reimbursable grant, so the town would actually have to purchase, close on this property, pay for the property, uh, meet some conditions of the grant, and then we would be reimbursed the two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. That's why we're asking for, uh, the entire purchase, uh, price plus closing costs and survey costs of, of six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. I, I will let everyone know, including yourself, that if the town is not able to acquire all five lots, that the town would lose the two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar, uh, Drinking Water Supply Grant. So, um, at this point, we're, we, under the right of first refusal, we would be purchasing Lot 2E, and I am hopeful that over the next week or so, that we may be able to come to successful negotiations, uh, both from the buyer and the seller's perspective, uh, the remaining four lots and acquire all five. I do think water is a scarce resource, so it is a good project for the town to, uh, acquire this and protect the, uh, the aquifer.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Knackey, 146 Valley Road. I chair the Capitol Committee. Myself and the Capitol Committee voted in favor of supporting this article to move this forward. I personally think it's a good idea, but I do have one question. We have agricultural land that we're purchasing here. It's open field land. Is the Select Board going to be entertaining in the future some type of agricultural agreement for local farmers to utilize this land, or is this going to just be a dormant state of land?
Thank you. Uh, who's going to answer that? Did you hear the question, Ed? Um, question, uh, Charlie Knackey asked, will there be consideration for agricultural usage for the property?
That might be it.
Alright, Kurt Bojolli. Thank you.
Charlie, thanks. Kurt Bojolli, Water Commissioner, Strong Road. Let me pull this up. The, uh, Drinking Water Supply Protection Grant, uh, requires a conservation restriction that we've, we've started. Our intent on that fourteen-point-four acres is pretty much to leave it as it is. It's really, you know, that side of the road is mostly wooded. There's one open area, but, uh, we plan to keep it, uh, just for drinking water purposes. There may be passive recreation. There could be some walking and hiking through there. If the Water, uh, Commissioners, Water Department feels that it should be, uh, the trees should be cleared at some time, or harvested or managed, we're trying to put that into the conservation restriction, but we have no intention at this point of having agriculture on that land.
Thank you. I answered your question. Great. Who would like to speak?
Tom Livingston, Pomeroy Meadow Road. Uh, we're clear about the two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars from the state, the remaining, the remaining funding of the six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, thousand dollars. My understanding is that that would be funded through the Community Preservation Fund? Can someone speak to that, please?
Thank you, Ed.
Yes, uh, this would be funded, it would be borrowed from future CPC surcharges, uh, local surcharges, and one of the pieces is that the two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-dollar, uh, Drinking Water Supply Grant, when received, would go to offset what was, actually have to be borrowed from CPC, but this is a CPC project, and, uh, like I say, to fund it, uh, it would be borrowed against future surcharges.
That answer your question? Great. I don't see you. Oh, there you are. Who else would like to speak on this? Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll vote. Yeah? All those in favor of the motion under Article 34? We need two-thirds. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 34 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. Don't go home, we have a lot of work to do.
Mr. Moderator, uh, I'm going to read the article, then the motion.
Yes, thank you.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, two-hundred-eight-thousand-one-hundred-one dollars to operate the Transfer Station Enterprise according to the following budget: Wages, thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. Operating expenses, one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Environmental compliance, nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Indirect costs, eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. Debt services, twenty-one thousand, for a total of two-hundred-eight-thousand-one-hundred-one dollars. And that one-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars be raised from Transfer Station Enterprise revenues, and five-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars to be taken from retained earnings, and eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars to be appropriated in general fund indirect costs, or take any other action relative thereto.
Well, withdraw that or take any other action relative thereto. I wasn't sharp enough to stop you.
Okay, uh, so motion, move that the town vote the budget of the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund as presented in Article 9 of the warrant for May 7th, 2009 Annual Town Meeting.
Great. Who would like to speak on this? Motion made, or you're second?
Second.
Second, got it. Who would like to speak on this?
Randall Kemp, Transfer Station Manager. The Transfer Station Fund is set up so that revenues generated from resident user fees are sufficient to cover the expense to operate the transfer station. There are no changes from FY19 in days of operation nor permit nor bag fees proposed for FY20. Tipping fees remain unchanged with the exception of mattresses and box springs will return to twenty dollars each, uh, because the state subsidized mattress program we were part of has expired, and we're adding a five-dollar charge for twenty-pound propane cylinders to cover the cost of transport to our receiving facility. Uh, we used to get them taken away for free. That is all.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Anyone who want to speak at all? Hearing none, we'll vote. On the motion for Article 9, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 9 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 10, please.
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available, available funds, eight-hundred-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-five dollars to operate the water enterprise according to the following budget: Wages, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. Operating expenses, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-three. Capital outlay, one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. Indirect costs, ninety-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-six. Debt services, two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, for a total of eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five. And that six-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-sixty dollars be raised from the water enterprise revenues, and thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine from retained earnings, and ninety-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-six appropriated in the general fund. And for the motion, I'd like to refer to Greenie.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend Article 10, um, to read as follows.
So you're, you're, you're bringing in a motion, a motion. Yeah, you go.
Do you need a second on that?
No, you're, oh, um, he didn't, no, 'cause, 'cause he read the article.
Okay.
So we need a motion now, and that's where you come in.
Okay. Amendment to Article 10. Mr. Moderator, I move to increase the salary for the water superintendent by giving a two percent raise over the fiscal year 2019 amount, which will be seventy-six-thousand-two-one dollars and sixty-two cents, and will also reduce the water enterprise fiscal year 2020 budget wage line from two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars to one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars to incorporate that the superintendent's wages do not increase more than two percent over FY19, and also to amend the money to be raised from retained earnings from thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars to nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
Motion is made, uh, general motion on Article 10. Uh, it was revised, which is, fits the four corners of the article. Who would like to second it?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on it? Explain it? Discuss it?
I hope the voters can understand how much we painstakingly went through the budget and tried as hard as we could to free money for various, uh, budget lines, and last year we had a proposition, uh, two-and-a-half override, and no municipal employees received wages, uh, raises. This year, two percent raises are built into the, uh, budget for municipal employees, and so we're just trying to be consistent with, um, offering raises, uh, to municipal employees.
Anybody else would like to speak in opposition?
Matt Christie, Chairman of the Water Commission. Um, the original motion that I'll just speak on briefly, or the original article, was a level-funded article from last year. Um, it did include, uh, compensation increases for the water superintendent. Uh, Mr. Moderator, similar to the, uh, enterprise fund, uh, the, for the trash, or for the transfer station, the water department is run on enterprise fund. All of the revenues are generated strictly from the ratepayers. Um, the last two years, and we were hoping to go forward this year to include a level-funded budget, um, the motion on the floor is to reduce our budget, which will directly impact the overall budget to the town as well. Um, in 2019, the water department contributed about seventy-five-thousand dollars in indirect costs to the town of Southampton. Our budget increased that by twenty-five percent to a total of about ninety-four-thousand dollars. What this amended article is doing is actually taking money away from the town of Southampton, and it's also, um, essentially, uh, undercuts the work that the Water Commission does independently. When the Water Commission was established in 1932, uh, the purpose was to have an independent board responsible for the, for the water of the town because it is such a precious, precious resource to the town. If we were to, uh, not have a Water Commission and not have an enterprise fund, the town itself would be responsible for picking up the entire eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-dollar budget, which, as we heard earlier, there's really no money for that. Um, I will also speak to the, uh, to the wage increase that was included for the superintendent in the original article. Comparable communities, the average, uh, wage for a water superintendent, comparable being number of services, number of, um, employees, and number of, uh, the operating budget, is roughly eighty-six-thousand dollars according to the Massachusetts Water Works Association. Currently, this water superintendent is somewhere in the seventy-six-thousand-dollar range, and in the last six months, he's been the finalist for two jobs in the area, um, which went to in-house candidates, and the starting compensation there was eighty-five-thousand dollars. It was in our, we feel it's in the best interest for continuity of the department, continuity of the water system, to bring our water superintendent up to the market rate. Uh, the original article was doing that, therefore I, um, I recommend that you do not vote in favor of the motion as amended.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. Uh, the issue the Select Board had, uh, and we discussed it at our meeting last night, is this is a twelve-thousand-dollar increase to one position. Uh, everybody else obviously getting two percent, and also the Water Commissioner did not follow the PQB, the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board. According to our town attorney, under Mass. General Law, it has to go through the same process as any employee in town. So not only is it a twelve-thousand-dollar increase, but it didn't follow the normal procedures, and that's why we reduced it to give two percent as everybody else got in the town. Thanks.
Anybody else would like to speak before somebody speaks for a second time?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to address that last point. We are including the budget figure in our budget. We have no intention of circumventing the process to establish a merit raise for the superintendent. Therefore, once the budget's approved, we will go through the proper procedures to get his merit raise approved, which includes the PPBB and the Board of Select Board sign-off.
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. I guess our concern is that if you build a twelve-thousand-dollar salary increase in, and then you go to the PQB with that figure in mind, and it's not the figure that the PQB comes out with, it, it, the process is backwards in, in our opinion. That's why we want to do it the right way.
Thank you. Anybody else? You both have spoken twice. Seeing none, we're going to vote for the motion under Article 10. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion for Article... The motion for Article 10 passes unanimously. May I hear the motion for Article 11, please?
That was the...
I'm sorry. My bad. Um, by majority. My bad.
Don't you vote on the amendment first?
It wasn't an amendment. You presented a motion, not an amendment. I corrected you when you were at the mic.
Mr. Moderator, request to count the vote, please.
Sorry?
Request to count the vote, please.
You want them to vote again? Are you challenging the vote?
He, he just wants the vote counted.
That's what I asked. Alright, let's stand up. We need seven. We need seven. I'm not recognizing you, sir. Yes, sir.
I don't really know voting.
We, we had a motion that was read at the microphone rather than the motion that was read at the table. It didn't amend the motion. The article was read prior, so we had no amended motion. We had a motion that was changed in wording, like we did before with other articles in this meeting. So we're voting on a motion, not an amended motion, but you, sir, if you would like to have a count, then I need, uh, six people to stand up to...
So we're voting by a direct... You're not familiar?
I, I recognize that, but I need six people to stand up to challenge the vote, and then I will explain what we're voting on. Okay. Alright, so, I would like you to read the motion again, from your seat.
Mr. Moderator, I move to increase the salary for the water superintendent by giving a two percent raise over the fiscal year 19 amount, which will be seventy-six-thousand-two-one dollars and sixty-two cents, and also to reduce the water enterprise fiscal year 2020 budget wage line from two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand to one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars to incorporate that the superintendent wages do not increase more than two percent over FY19, and also to amend the money to be raised from retained earnings from thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars to nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
And since I didn't have a copy of the motion, and I see the question on your face, are you approving the rest of the budget under the Water Department Enterprise Fund? Is it in here? I know that's what the motion, but that's wasn't what the question is. Because the original motion had the town to approve the budget of the Water Department Enterprise Fund as presented, uh, in Article 10, and that motion was never read. What was read was this motion, uh, that I have in my hand.
Yes, the request is to approve this motion, uh, with what I read, in addition to what
Mr. Moderator, could you please review the entire motion and budget as presented in the amended article?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the motion that was read at the microphone did not, to my opinion, include approving the budget of the Water Department Enterprise Fund, um, with the tweak. Uh, what was read was motion to increase the salary of the Water Department Superintendent by giving, Water Superintendent by giving a two percent raise over the fiscal 2019 amount, which will be seventy-six-thousand-two-one dollars, sixty-two cents, and also to reduce the water enterprise, uh, fiscal 2020 budget wages line from two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars to one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars to incorporate that the superintendent wages do not increase more than two percent over fiscal 19, and also to amend the money to be raised from retained earnings from thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars to nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. So I think this was meant to be an amendment to the motion, but we never had the motion because we had the article. So, do we want to start all over again?
Yes.
Alright. I need a motion for Article 10. Since you've already read the article, uh, please read the motion.
I will read the, the original motion.
Thank you.
I move that the town vote to approve the budget of the Water Department Enterprise Fund as presented in Article 10 of the warrant for the May 7th, 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and who would like to address this?
Mr. Moderator, Matt Christie, Chairman of the Water Commission. Um, Article 10... Article 10 presents a level-funded budget from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. It is, in fact, from what I saw, the only level-funded budget that we're voting on tonight. I ask that you call the question.
Uh, no. No, it's unfair, because you can never do that. You can never debate, then ask to call the question, because that cuts everybody off. So that's illegal. Who would like to speak next?
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. I had originally asked if I could read an amendment, because Jim Labrie had actually read the motion, but nonetheless, I'd like to make an amendment to Article 10 to read the motion to increase the salary for the water superintendent by giving a 2% raise over the FY19 amount, which would be $76,021.62, and also to reduce the water enterprise FY 2020 budget wage line from $210,356 to $199,922. To incorporate that the superintendent wages do not increase more than 2% over FY19, and also to amend the money to be raised from the retained earnings from $30,189 to $19,755.
We have motion for amendment. Do we have a second? We have a, a motion and a second, and we're going to address the amendment only. Vote on it, then we're going to vote on the motion under the article. Who would like to address this? Explain it. We need somebody to explain the amendment.
As I mentioned before, we try very hard to be consistent across the board, municipal employees, to encourage. I think that there could be a fair number of people that might be, may not have this, a comparison salary, and so we're just trying to be consistent across municipal employees. And my understanding is that the enterprise fund does come from our water bills. I mean, it's our money. It's a taxpayer's money.
Thank you.
Matt Christie, Water Commission Chairman. I do not support the amendment, and I feel that the, the impact of the amendment will be, we will lose our superintendent, and we will be forced to advertise the position at that same rate that is being cut today to get a comparable qualified individual to run our department. I don't feel this is a fiscally responsible motion, and I vote, or encourage you to vote against this motion.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. You might decide that this is hearsay, but there are a lot of employees in this community who are underpaid, and we have done nothing so far to bring them up to, in my opinion, we haven't done anything as a community to bring them up to the level where they need to be, myself included. Why don't we start somewhere, and then we can go forward and do a plan on how to get everyone up to where they need to be, but let's start somewhere.
Thank you. Next.
John Martin, Stella, 106 Clark Street. I agree with her, but I don't agree with the fact that we haven't started somewhere. We have certain department heads that we brought up. We evaluated them. We've given them contracts. We brought them up to where they should be, but we've done it with the right process. We've gone through the PQB. We've gone through an evaluation process of the position. It's been graded, and then the increase has been put there. It hasn't been them coming to us saying, "I want $20,000 more," and then go to the PQB and say, "Back into that for me, please," because that's what it feels like right now, and that's not what we want. It's not fair to everybody else. Everybody should be looked at the same way, evaluated the same way, and get fair wages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Keener, Peacock Road, uh, sorry, County Road.
Do you move?
It's my understanding when the Water Commissioner was speaking earlier, if this passes, that they have, also have an intent, an intent to move forward to the Personal Policies Board and ask for an additional merit raise. I think there's a problem here.
And again, we're not voting on the intent. Thank you. Anyone else? We're going to vote, and we're going to vote by cards. Sorry about that. I get lost in conversations. We're going to vote on the amendment. Then we're going to vote on the article. My bad. All those in favor, no counting yet. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
The amendment passes by majority. Now, we're going to vote on the amended motion for Article 10. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the amended motion for Article 10, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 10 passes, amended motion for Article 10 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 11, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $20,200 from the W-PAT loan repayment account to fund amortization of the W-PAT bonds in the water department.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Every year, we appropriate money from this Water Pollution Abatement Trust account to repay the loans that we loan out to town residents to help fix their septic system. And this year, it's a little less than last year because one of those amounts fell off of our debt schedule.
Motion, uh, okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion in Article 11, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 11 passes unanimously. Who would like to address Article 12, please? May I hear a motion?
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer $100,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations account to the EMS slash ambulance department expense account to fund ambulance transportation.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address Article, motion for Article 12?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Every year, we appropriate money from ambulance fees, which is the receipts reserved for appropriation, the fees that we've collected for all the ambulance runs that the EMS department does, and this is just helping a funding source to help the general fund budget for the expenses that they have during the fiscal year.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion in Article 12, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 12 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 13, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $65,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations account to the debt expense account to fund the repayment of the loan to purchase the newest ambulance.
Thank you. May I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Last year, we purchased a brand-new ambulance, as our previous ambulance had tons of repairs. This is to pay back the $319,993 that we borrowed to purchase the ambulance over a five-year period. This is the first installment, which we are taking from ambulance fees that we've collected in use of that ambulance.
Anybody else like to address this? Pro, con, question? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion in Article 13, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 13 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 14, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $10,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations accounts to the ambulance stabilization account.
Thank you. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. A few years ago, the chief and I had discussed setting up an ambulance stabilization account to put money away in order for us to purchase another new ambulance. While we borrowed the money for the ambulance we currently have, the chief and I decided that it would be prudent to take a sum of money, this year it's $10,000, from those ambulance fees, put it back into that stabilization fund. So in eight years' time, when we need another new ambulance, we actually have the majority of the money set aside in the stabilization fund.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this?
John Workman, Belanger Road. This article is just giving money in towards a truck replacement schedule that we had put in place six years ago, just to ensure that the equipment, as it expires, there's money there to replenish it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion for Article 14. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 14 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 15, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $35,420.05 from the operational stabilization fund to the police expense and wages for recruitment, for recruit academy for the placement and training, and of two new police offices during fiscal year 20.
Thank you. May I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address Article 15?
Ian Illingsworth, Police Chief, Kynley Circle. Just to give you a breakdown of this number, the academy tuition's about $3,000, and additional academy expenses are about additional $1,700. And wages to cover them while they're in the academy is for one officer for the, will be about $16,000, and for the second officer that starts June 10, will be another $14,000. The reason why this is in, is in an article is, the caveat is, right now, we don't have academy scheduled for fiscal year 2020 for our second officer. We have an officer that begins the academy on June 2, and as far as the expenses for the tuition and, and additional academy expenses, those are all taken care of, but the placement of the, or rather, the, to support a position while he's in the academy, we fulfill that position with part-time officers. That would be about $14,000. Should academy not be organized for fiscal year 2020 for the second officer, roughly $20,000 of this article will be returned back to stabilization, and that's why it's not in my budget. It's the, really, the fiscally responsible thing to do.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll vote then. We need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion in Article 15, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 15 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. Who would give me a motion for Article 16?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $35,000 from the operational stabilization fund to the Highway Department MS4 Stormwater Management Permit account to fund the mandated permit requirements for the state, federal compliance in fiscal year 20.
Thank you. Who would give me a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address the motion for Article 16?
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. So this is $35,000 for a consultant to do a myriad of tasks required by Federal Clean Water Act. Should be in my budget, but it's got taken out. So anybody, I can, I can go on about what it involves if anybody has questions.
Anybody want to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, we need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion for Article 16, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 16 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. Who will give me a motion for Article 17, please?
To see if the town will vote to allow the Hampshire Regional School District Administration to enter into a five-year contract consisting of a three-year base with the option to renew two additional one-year periods to provide bus transportation to Hampshire Regional High School, Chesterfield-Goshen Regional School, Southampton Public Schools, West Hampton Public Schools, Williamsburg Public Schools, and vocational transportation, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Hampshire Regional School District to enter into a five-year contract consisting of a three-year base with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods to provide bus transportation as presented in Article 17 of the warrant of May 7, 2019, annual town meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Hi. Our current bus contract for...
Oh, just give me your name again.
Oh, sorry. Aaron Osborne, Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Moderator, our current bus contract ends at the end of this year. We are obligated to then bid that contract back out. This year, we put the contract out for bid in February. Between February and March, we held a bidders conference. We received bids back. We had three prospective bidders at the bidders conference. Of those three, two of them submitted bids. Only one of them submitted a complete bid for all of the schools. LaCrensky bid only on West Hampton, and they did not bid on the vocational portion. Durham, our current school bus provider, bid on the entire contract. This contract represents a 2.5% increase, which is very attractive in this environment. Many bus contracts that I've seen gone through, go through recently have been 5% to 7% increases. This includes a, an annual increase that I think is pegged to CPI, which is very typical of the industry.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Questions? Seeing none, we'll vote for the motion under Article 17. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 17 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 18, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to enter into a 10-year contract with the option for a five-year extension commencing on July 1, 2020, with the qualified vendors selected by Mass. DEP through a competitive bid process for recycling processing services for the town, subject to the select board's determination that the contract is in the best interest of the town, and subject to town meeting approval in the spring 2020 for funding for these services.
Thank you. Motion made or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on Article 18, please?
Randall Kemp, Transfer Station Manager. Our contract with the Springfield Materials Recycling Facility is due to expire June 2020. It's currently in bid, and bids are, the community agreement is expected by December 19, 2019. We have to be ready for the select board to be able to sign that contract in order to have somewhere for our recyclables to go.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 18, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 18 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 19, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to become a member in the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District for a minimum three-year period pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 252, Section 5A, and other applicable sections of said law, and to fund the membership fee, transfer, appropriate $5,000 from free cash.
I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Hello, Mr. Moderator. My name is Greg Lewis. I'm a non-resident, so I really appreciate...
You've invited earlier. Please continue.
Thank you. So I, I work by day as a public health emergency planner in Greenfield. By night, I like to volunteer and go to town meetings and talk about this new mosquito control district. This is a district that was formed two years ago by about a dozen local towns in support to create the first new mosquito control district in Massachusetts in 40 years. There are 11 other mosquito control districts in Massachusetts. They cover pretty much all regions except the Pioneer Valley. We've known for years that we've had mosquito-borne illness in our midst, but we've had no way to know exactly where it was and where the risk was locally. So after being diligent in petitioning the state to get a certified mosquito control district, we are now seeking members, which are local communities. It's a voluntary district, charging rates that are, that are for services that are voluntary to the member communities. So what this article does is it starts the service... services by just assessing what the risk is in Southampton. What you will get for the -- what the town will get for the services is a very clear picture of what kind of mosquito species are here in Southampton, which ones carry disease, and it will basically arm the local public health with important up-to-date information as to whether there is West Nile Disease or Eastern Equine Encephalitis. These are diseases that are -- have been endemic in Massachusetts for years. We're just offering the chance for local public health to really gauge the risk and be able to issue public statements to try to keep people able to enjoy the outdoors and know what measures they could take to protect themselves. So, maybe avoiding dusk activities if there's a really high level of West Nile virus in the area. I want to actually clarify that there's no longer a three-year commitment to join this district. I -- and the rest of the commissioners on -- I'm sorry, I should have addressed that. I'm a commissioner on the district. There are five of us, including Meredith O'Leary, who's behind me. We decided that we didn't require a three-year minimum commitment anymore because we know that this is a new service, and we don't think that communities are going to be able to gauge that far ahead without knowing the value of the service. I also want to clarify that there will be no mosquito chemicals or spraying used as a part of this membership. We are just initiating this data-finding activity with three trap sites. Any kind of further membership in future years, if the town decides that they would like to use a non-toxic larva side that really only affects mosquito larvae, that's what a lot of other towns and cities do. They treat their catch basins. It really only affects the mosquito larvae and keeps the populations down. So, this is a really quick elevator kind of speech. If you have questions, I'd be happy to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. I need an amendment. I would recommend, I would welcome, I would welcome amendment to amend the motion to remove for a minimum three-year period.
Charlie Keneke Valley Road, Southampton. I worked with Greg for the last few years to establish this mosquito control district. This is a must-do for the town of Southampton, but I want to make a motion to strike the three years.
Okay, we have a motion to make an amendment. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of amending the motion by removing for a minimum three-year period, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. We now have an amended motion, which has passed unanimously. So, now we're back to an amended motion. Who would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Meredith O'Leary, Sixth Cheryl Lane. I am a Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District Commissioner, and I also am the City of North Hampton Public Health Director during my day job. I'm here to convey the message about the importance of surveillance, and that mosquito surveillance, which you would get if you joined the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District, is the cornerstone of a quality-integrated mosquito management program, and is the first step in protecting public health of the residents of Southampton. Mosquito surveillance is a process that allows us to identify the mosquitoes that are in our community, and mosquito surveillance is also the process of understanding the population dynamics and species distribution of adult mosquitoes in our community. This is a critical factor in determining how to control mosquitoes and the risk of disease. So, I am asking for the support of the voting members tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion. Anybody else?
Sharon Hart, Belanger Road, also a Board of Health member, and I support this request to protect the public health of the Southampton residents.
Thank you.
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. I support this motion in theory, but I just have a couple of questions. One of them is, is it $5,000 per year?
That's been removed.
No, I know.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was five per year, and then we would only be voting on one year.
It wasn't $5,000 for the three years. It's $5,000 per year.
Yep.
The other thing is, it's unfortunate, I think, that this is a town-wide thing. I mean, mosquitoes do fly across town lines, so I don't know why it's not a county thing. And we also have a tick-borne problem, and I'm wondering, is this part of a comprehensive Department of Public Health sort of initiative that addresses, you know, we're going to have another request for tick-borne problems, or is it -- obviously, this is restricted to mosquitoes. And I also have concerns about it coming from free cash, and I just, you know, I'm not really sure if we're going to continue to fund this through free cash, or -- so, I don't know if those questions can be answered.
Okay, we'd like to answer those questions.
Mr. Moderator, first, I wish they were a little bit enumerated, because I'm trying to make sure I remember everything that was asked. First, the $5,000 is each year. This is basically minimum surveillance service. In a pre-history, I was the State District Health Officer, and one of my assignments was to monitor mosquito diseases in this region, because there is no monitoring going on. Because of climate change, this grassroots development has created this mosquito control district out here. As Greg said, for 40 years, we've had absolutely no monitoring, except spot checks done by the state lab, which I was part of. That's been discontinued some 10 years ago. We need to have the monitoring so we understand what's happening. We also have the open-ended question of climate change. As we can see by the last couple of years, the amount of rainfall and everything else, we're creating a lot more habitation for these mosquitoes, and our climate seems to be warming, which is allowing other species of mosquitoes, other than the Culex Pippian, to be coming up the coastline, which carry other diseases. John, you getting this? Yeah, okay. But the simple reality of it is, this is us protecting ourselves in this town. As for Lyme disease and tick-borne illnesses, we did surveillance on that years ago to establish the different types of disease strains and all the rest of that. But the Department of Public Health, to my knowledge, and I'm not part of that organization anymore, has no underlying project to move forward to have local communities monitor that. That's mostly monitored through your maven disease control after the fact when people get ill.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Great. Next?
Jim Labree, Gun Road. I think it's a great first step to identify a problem before you can treat it. But my question is, if we join the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control Organization, does that allow us to receive any state or federal funding?
Greg? Thank you.
That's a great question. Thank you. Greg Lewis, again. So, district members across the state will enjoy or benefit from direct state support if there was ever a serious outbreak of human cases of mosquito-borne disease. So, if you had to ramp up operations, as it were, through this district, the district would receive funding from the Department of Public Health to disperse to its member communities in the form of population-control-type mosquito services. So, I wanted to just add a bit of information that West Nile virus cases in the Commonwealth were the highest last year in history in terms of human cases. So, we are seeing increased incidences of West Nile confirmed cases. There were 49 in the state last year, and that's probably undercounted by 300%. So, it's in our midst. It particularly goes after and manifests in worse disease, and our elderly population over 60 is particularly susceptible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, answer your question. Great. Anybody else? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 19, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It passes unanimously. Now, you're such a lovely audience, I'd like to take you home with me, but I can't. We've gone beyond the bewitching hour of 10 o'clock. According to our bylaw, you, our legislative body, make a decision. Do we continue, or do we reconvene tomorrow at 7:00? We have a motion to continue. We have a motion to continue. And second, there's discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of continuing, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? We continue unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 20, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $250,000 to purchase a new dump truck with plow and sander body for the Highway Department, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of $250,000 for said appropriation under applicable sections of Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8 of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore. And in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied that may be necessary for that purchase, provided, however, that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent on the approval by the voters of the town of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion under General Laws, Chapter 57, Section 21(c), and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to issue any bonds or notes therefore, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs. And the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied that may be necessary for that purchase, as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, 9, or any other general or specific law.
Motion made or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We needed two-thirds majority, and the Finance Committee does recommend passage of this, and we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation.
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. So, what we're asking for is a replacement of that truck up there. It's a 1996 Ford L9000. We use it for plowing. It's also got a wing plow on it. It sands the roads, and then hauls in the summertime. So, it's a 23-year-old truck with 67,000 miles on it. It's one of nine vehicles I have that are over 15 years old, and it needs to be replaced.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Any questions? Anybody got a question, come right up to the mic.
Charlie Keneke, Capital Committee. Capital Committee recommended the purchase of this truck. It is time.
Thank you. Somebody else sitting there want to speak?
Tom Livingston, Palmeroy Meadow Road. I have two questions. My first question, with this being a Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion, I'm aware of another Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion on the ballot for May, so will this be a specific line item on the ballot, or will this be lumped in with the other debt exclusion?
Okay.
That's my first question.
Vicki? Separate items, the answer. That answer your question?
There are separate line items. There's actually going to be three. The East Street Bridge, this one, and the school.
And it will not be on this coming election on the 21st? The three of them?
This will not be on this thing?
It will not. The three will not be on the September -- on the May 21st election.
Want me to answer that?
Yes.
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. There's a 35-day period from the time that we approve it till the election, and we can't meet that this period. So, we'll have a special election. If this passes tonight, our town administrator will schedule a special election, so it's done quickly.
I was at the meeting last night, and I heard it. I did not author the rule. Thank you.
My second question was Joseph Thurney's specifics of the debt exclusion and how that would be repaid back.
Okay, who wants to address the debt exclusion? Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmeroy Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Basically, the debt exclusion would be an increase to your property taxes for a certain dollar value for the certain length of time of loan for a particular item. This particular item, since it is a vehicle, we usually would borrow money for 10 years, and with estimates of interest rates that we received from our financial advisor a few months ago, it would be about four cents per thousand. That would increase for that 10-year period.
Did that answer your question? Good. Thanks. Anybody else? Seeing none, will vote. We need two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion for Article 20, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 20 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. Motion for Article 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $97,800 for the Norris Elementary School Building Improvement Project. Said project to include $9,000 for sink replacement in the science lab slash classrooms, $28,500 to replace carpeting in several classrooms, $48,500 for the replacement and repair of exterior doors in the school, $10,500 for repairs and caulking to the roof gutters, drains, and roof scuppers, and $1,300 for the repair of the exterior masonry of the building, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of $97,800 for said appropriation under applicable sections of Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the General Laws and/or General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for such projects shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied that may be necessary for that purpose, provided, however, that the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent on the approval by the voters of the town of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion under General Laws, C 59, Section 21(c), and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, as authorized by General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 9, or any other general or special law.
We have the best motion readers in the valley. I'll put us up against any town. May I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? We need two-thirds majority, and Finance Committee recommends approval.
Charlie Keneke, Capital Committee recommends approval. Thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak at all?
Tom Lovelli, Montgomery Road, Head Custodian of Norris School. I just wanted to speak to a few of the items here.
A little closer to the mic.
Sure. The sink replacement is more than just sinks. It's the sinks, and it's hot water. Those sinks, since 1995, have not had any hot water in them. And by code, they're supposed to have the hot water in them, and it's a health issue for the kids in the classrooms. The carpeting that's upstairs, this is 11 rooms of carpeting, and it's carpet squares that are going to be installed, which is great because if kids spill something, or if one gets destroyed, you can just remove the square. Currently, right now, when it gets humid out, the carpets can raise up to four inches in height and buckle, so it's a tripping hazard and a safety issue. And the carpets are really beat. And the carpets are really beat. The doors, for the exterior doors in the school, it's approximately eight sets of double doors. The doors are so far gone, they're beyond repair. There are moldings around the windows, in some cases, that are virtually gone. There's half-inch to three-quarter-inch gaps on the bottom from the corrosion and the rust that's missing. And in some cases, there are safety issues because of the rust and corrosion. The doors don't automatically shut, and we have to be extra careful when securing the school. The repairs for the caulking to the roof and the gutters, Norris has a history of very bad roof. It's always leaking. We got most of those leaks, if not all of those leaks, under control, and it was pointed out by experts that the breaches are in the walls. The remaining leaks in the school are in the walls. And you can see some of these pictures. You can see the gutters up at the top. Those have been breached. The water comes down. That's the front of the school. That's actually an example of a really bad door. That's probably one of the worst doors in the school. It's really corroded. And you can see the stains coming down. That's a scupper up on the top where the water's coming down. It's leaking down into the doors. The bigger issue is above the gymnasium. There's half-inch to one-inch caulking gaps that come from the top of the gutter all the way down to the second floor above the gym instructor's office. And water pours in there. What happens is, you don't know if it's going to leak. Sometimes it leaks, sometimes it doesn't. So it backs up the fact that the gutter and repair guy said that when there's a driving rain, it hits the side of the building, it hits where the caulking's all decayed, and it comes down. I've taken videos of it up above the roof, and he's absolutely right. It is breaching from the wall. So that's our, that's our remaining issue on the school.
Thank you.
That's for the, for the leaking. And lastly, the 1,300 for the repair of the exterior masonry, those are the columns in the front of the school. We had an inspection last summer. It wasn't mandatory, but the building inspector is recommending that we repair those because they're only going to get worse, and it's a fairly minor repair.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's another one.
Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21, and we need two-thirds, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 21 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Mayor, a motion for Article 22, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $46,672 to purchase a new SUV police cruiser for the police department and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow the sum of $46,672 for said appropriation under applicable, applicable sections of Section, of Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
Second.
We're good. I was just checking something. We have a second? Second, thank you. Motion made and seconded. I had to check the figures because there was a little discrepancy earlier. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, Capital Committee recommends this purchase. It's timely.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak at all?
Ian Elingsworth, Kyleen Circle. This particular car would replace a marked 2011 Crown Victoria with 144,000 miles on it. That's currently being used in, for patrol services.
Just to make sure what we're voting on, we're voting on the figure of $46,672 and not the $47,672 that may be in the motions in front of you. Anybody else would like to speak on this? Seeing none will vote. All those for the motion in favor of the motion under Article 22, these two-thirds, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 22 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 23, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $46,186 to purchase a new SUV administrative vehicle for the fire department, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow the sum of $46,186 for said appropriation under applicable sections of Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Keneke, Capital Committee recommends this.
Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak on it at all?
John Workman, Belanger Road. This truck currently has 140,000 miles on it. It's part of a well-established truck replacement schedule. There is a concern with this truck just because we already had a spare tire that rotted out while driving and went tumbling down the road. So it's dubious as an emergency response vehicle. We're looking to replace it with this article.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this? Seeing none will vote. We need two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 23, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 23 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Who will give me a motion for Article 24, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $28,498 from the capital stabilization fund to the Norris School capital budget to fund the replacement of the fire alarm system at the Norris School.
Motion made and seconded?
Second.
I need a second, thanks.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? This needs two-thirds, and the Finance Committee does recommend.
Capital Committee recommends this article. Also, this is a life safety issue. That is why you're seeing it coming out of capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak on it at all?
Tom Lovelli, Montgomery Road, Head Custodian, Norris School. Last summer, there was an inspection done of the school.
A little closer to him.
Last summer, there was an inspection done at Norris School, and it was decided that the school should get a new alarm because the existing alarm system is dated, and the major suppliers of the parts cannot guarantee that any of the parts are available, readily available, if available at all. And if the alarm fails, then the school has to be closed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 24, we need a two-thirds majority, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion under Article 24 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Who will give me a motion on Article 25, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $26,000 from the capital stabilization fund to the Norris School capital budget to fund the replacement, repair of the concrete sidewalks at the Norris School.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Charlie Keneke, Capital Committee recommends this. This is another life safety issue. That's why you're seeing it coming out of the capital stabilization budget.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Seeing none, anybody would like to speak?
Again, Tom Lovelli, Head Custodian, Norris School. The pictures you see up on the PowerPoint right now are pictures of not only the cracks, but it was the recent repair work that was done. And the quote that we got this time is not to repeat that. The quote this time is to cut down four inches in squares, all the way down to the dirt, replace the cement. Cosmetically, it, they're going to do the best they can, but as far as safety and long-lasting, it'll be like new cement because it's not a patch anymore.
Thank you. Anybody else? Pro, con, questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 25, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 25 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Mayor, a motion for Article 26, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate the sum of $92,112 from the capital stabilization fund to the police dispatch capital budget to fund the replacement of the dispatch radio console at the police department, which serves police, fire, EMS, and highway.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This needs a two-thirds majority, and the Finance Committee recommends. Who would like to speak on this motion for Article 26?
Ian Elingsworth, Kyleen Circle. Just to give you a brief background on this, and I'll keep it brief. This particular radio console is the emergency operations for the police, fire, and highway department, and emergency medical services for the town. The current consoles that we have now are from 2008. That's when they were installed, and they're based on Windows XP operating system. That's been obsolete since 2014. So it's, we're in a precarious position right now, and should there be a failure, it's a catastrophic failure that we cannot fix. So that's why we're asking for it to be replaced.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 26, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. Motion for Article 26 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Mayor, a motion for Article 27, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $12,000 from the capital stabilization fund to the fire department capital budget to fund the replacement of fire turnout gear.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
The fire turnout, John Workman, Belanger Road. This is structural turnout gear for going into a dangerous environment with fire. It has a 10-year lifespan. Currently, we have a program that replaces four sets every year into perpetuity in order so that we're not having a lump sum of having to replace gear all at one time. We've gone through different ways of trying to fund this in the past. Hopefully, this will be the last year that it'll come through the capital, capital funding. We have found some cost savings in our wage accounts to fund this for next year and for years thereafter. So I'm looking for support for this tonight.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Anybody else? Questions? Questions? Come right up.
Tom Livingston, Pomeroy Meadow Road. Just a question. The budget that we just approved has $12,000 for fire turnout gear. How is that different from what's being asked for here?
As I just spoken to, in the new budget cycle, we did realize the cost savings that we could find in wages, and that's how we funded it for the new budget that we just voted in tonight. This $12,000 is for the past, the year that we're currently in, and it's been underfunded. And so this money is then to make up for that lack of funding that we've recognized this year.
That answer your question? Great. Anybody else seeing none will vote. Two-thirds majority required. All those in favor of the motion on Article 27, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 27 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. May I have a motion for Article 28, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate a total sum of $44,000, $20,000 from the capital stabilization fund, and $24,000 from the operating stabilization fund to the library department capital budget to fund the replacement of the Southampton Edwards Public Library roof.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Keneke, Capital Committee highly recommends this. This roof has gone to, its useful life has expired some time ago, and prior to us having to deal with leaks and damages, we need to start moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone who want to speak in opposition? Anyone who want to speak at all?
Ed Gibson, Town Administrator. I have been up on that roof to take these pictures and check it out. This roof is 22 years old. The asphalt fingers that are up there are actually fairly thin, but there are numerous sections like the one you see on the right, and there's at least probably 100, 100 tabs up there currently on the different sections that have broken off. There has been leaking in the past. It has been able to be patched, but it is time to replace this roof before there is further or more severe damage inside the library itself.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then we'll vote. Needs two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion on Article 28, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion for Article 28 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds requirement. I thank everyone for sticking to it and staying with us. We're, we're almost done. Let's, let's do this together. Motion for Article 29, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate a total sum of $15,025 from free cash to the police department capital budget to fund the replacement of five PCs with software licenses, and to purchase Microsoft Office and Windows 10 software licenses for the existing PCs, which, which will not be replaced by the police department and the dispatchers at this time.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Capital Committee recommends approval of this. Self-evident why.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in opposition? Anybody else? We're going to vote on the motion for Article 29. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 30, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer appropriate a total sum of $8,029 from free cash to the town hall department capital budget to fund the replacement of seven PCs, complete with software licenses.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Capital Committee recommends approval of this. It's self-evident as to why.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Anybody want to speak on this?
This would start the cycle of the municipal computers to be replaced, which will be done over the next two to three years. This would replace seven of them, complete with new Microsoft Office suites.
Thank you. See anybody else? Seeing none, we'll vote for the motion for Article 30. Simple majority. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 31, please.
I'm going to read the whole thing here, to see if the town will vote to amend Article thir-
I could go with the motion. Everybody has it in front of them. Yeah, we need everybody to stay put. If you would, we're almost done.
Move that the town vote to amend Article-
Thank you. What is that? Go ahead.
Thank you. Move that the town vote to amend Article 42 of the town general bylaws pursuant to the provisions of Section 53 E1/2 of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as most recently amended by inserting two new categories to the revolving funds, quote, "conservation commission and fire chief," end quote, and specifying the departmental receipts to be credited to each fund, the departmental purposes or programs for which each fund may be expended, and the entity authorized to expend each fund with the new language noted in italics, as per Article 31 of the warrant for the May 7, 2019 annual town meeting, and to set the fiscal year spending limits as specified in Article 31.
Motion made, or a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Pomeroy Meadow Road, Town Accountant. I'm going to speak to the Conservation Forestry Revolving Fund. Basically, Chapter 44, 53 E and a Half allows you to, by state statute, create a departmental revolving fund specifically for certain departments and committees and commissions, as long as the receipts are related to the actions of that particular fund. With the Conservation Commission, they are trying to take revenue from forestry that's going to be done on conservation land that the town owns in order to thin out those, those pieces of property and to hopefully generate some income from the sale of that particular wood to fund the maintenance of- to fund the maintenance of those properties that the town is buying related to conservation.
John Workman, Belanger Road. For the burning permits that we sell each year, we collect about $5,000. We're looking to find creative ways to fund the need for brush gear, which is unique in that the structural turnout gear that you wear is not appropriate for hiking up, going, you know, a couple miles into woods to fight brush fires. So part of that money would go towards that type of gear. Also, if we need to get into the woods for either fighting a brush fire, it often involves bringing in a lot of water. Water itself is eight pounds a gallon. It can tire a firefighter out just to bring it that to the spot where you have your fire. One of the vehicles that is used to do this is often termed as like a gator, all-terrain vehicle, which would carry personnel and equipment into the woods. This vehicle can also be used for extrication of someone who is hurt in the woods and taking a stretcher to bring them back out again. In the past, we have utilized surrounding towns. Most recently, we had West Springfield come in with their unit just to help us with the recovery. The problem with that is it takes a fair amount of time, recognizing there's not a lot of financing for this type of thing. The idea of having a revolving fund for this type of equipment seemed appropriate and would help us out.
Thank you both. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak at all? No questions? So, we're going to vote on the motion for Article 31. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 31 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 32, and you can read the motion.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to set the limitation on expenditures for each revolving fund be established according to Article 32 of the May 7, 2019 annual town meeting.
Motion is made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant. Back in November of 2016, the Department of Revenue created a modern municipalization act where all we would do in regards to revolving funds would vote on the spending limits, as we voted back a couple years ago, to put them into our bylaws, so we don't have to vote on renewing each individual revolving fund. We just need to vote on the spending limits. The spending limits are pretty much set based on expenditures from previous years.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Questions? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the motion for Article 32. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion Article 32 passes unanimously. Hey, let's look at number 34 again. No, we're going right to Article 35, our last one for the evening. May I hear a motion? That was a joke. Nobody laughed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $2,762.50 from community preservation funds to the Cook Road account for the payment of bill from Winding River Land Conservancy. Said funds to be transferred from community preservation surcharges open space account.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this? And it needs a four-fifths majority because it's a pesto bill at an annual meeting, special town meeting, nine tenths. Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. The Winding River Land Conservancy sent me this bill when they were dissolving and merging with the Franklin Land Trust. They were going through all their bills that hadn't been paid, and somehow, this never got sent to us when we were doing the Cook Road property. I spoke with Virginia, and I spoke with the town of East Hampton as we were splitting those funds for that particular land on Cook Road, and discovered that East Hampton had paid their portion of the bill. So this bill is our half of Winding River's assistance that they helped us with for Cook Road.
Anyone in opposition? Anybody want to speak at all? Any questions? We need a four-fifths majority. All in favor of the motion under Article 35, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion for Article 35 passes unanimously. That includes our business for the night. You are all fantastic. I will entertain a motion now to dissolve our annual town meeting. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
This annual town meeting is dissolved. Thank you. Ms. Lucy Doll, our town clerk, Keener Deputy, Town Moderator, Accounters, Officers Ryan and Tim, thank you. East Hampton Media, safe home.